Uh, Mr. Wagner, I think I need a recorder over here.
Yeah, it's hit, it's hit your way.
You don't get the door since you're at it while you're here.
I'm headed that direction, but I'd be glad to turn around and get the door fixed. All right, I got this guy this night.
Okay, I'll wait on here.
Yes, you are. Yeah, you're on.
Oh, no, but is this?
Oh, yeah, I just got to turn the television on. Just record.
Is Ms. Thacker going to join us?
She is not.
Can I call the, uh, normal, uh, town council meeting to order? It is, it is September the 11th, 2025 at 7:03. If you would, please, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're very fortunate this evening. We have Pastor David Bailey with us to do our invocation, if you would, please, sir. Welcome, Pastor Bailey. Robbie's had a full schedule this week, so we'll give him some.
All right, we are live. We all remember where we were 24 years ago, I'm sure. And, um, so it's a solemn occasion of remembrance. And so I want to share a Psalm with us tonight. Psalm 121, "I lift up my eyes to the hills. Where does my help come from? My help comes from the Lord, the maker of heaven and earth. He will not let your foot slip. He who watches over you will not slumber. Indeed, he who watches over Israel will neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord watches over you. The Lord is your shade, it's your right hand. The sun will not harm you by day, nor the moon by night. The Lord will keep you from all harm. He will watch over your life. The Lord will watch over your coming and your going, both now and forevermore." Let us pray. Lord, on this solemn day of remembrance, we remember how we were calling out for your mercy 24 years ago. But, Lord, we need your mercy again today. Need your mercy in all the turmoil that's around the world and it's close to home, as close as Charlotte, as close as Utah. And, Lord, I pray that you will provide for the citizens of this town and this country a spirit of cooperation, a spirit of listening, a spirit of caring about the welfare of one another, caring about things that really matter. Lord, may we see friendships deepen and commitments to help one another grow. And, Lord, thank you for this town. Thank you for your presence in our midst. Thank you for allowing us to live in this community. And we pray, Lord, that what we do would be a reflection of your goodness in the way that we treat one another, in the way we steward the responsibilities that we have. And, Lord, we pray for our mayor and council members, that you would give them wisdom, that they would do things that would benefit this community and be honoring to you. And, Lord, thank you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, we will review and adopt the agenda. I make a motion that we do adopt.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, take off item number 13. Mr. Jones has got it covered under number 12. No sense in having two items.
Mr. Landrath, I'm not positive that I do.
Well, it can all be covered under that, so.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the reason. Because we both asked for it, so. Well, I'll just, I'll just drop that one off and we'll do it under yours. Whatever we gotta do, we can do under one, one thing.
Well, I, I just, I, you know, we have a citizen with a complex problem, a business with a problem. I want to be sure that they're heard, even if we can't solve their problem.
Well, we, we were doing the same thing, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
We're just forever taking each other. I don't think he wants to do it with you and then come back.
Well, we can combine them.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's just, it's the same thing, so. Well, I'll just take number 13 off, Mr. Mayor.
Without objection? It'll be it.
I'm, I've, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So, number 13 is consideration of minor site plan review case. Are we going to talk about that specific site plan under number 12?
That's what Mr. Landrath is suggesting.
We cover everything under that.
That's what he's suggesting, is that we combine it.
That would be the request. If you want to draw an error up to that, you know, with that site plan number and everything.
Mr. Landrath, would, just so we got it identified better, would you consider us combining 12 and 13?
That's fine, that, that's fine.
Okay, let's do that, Mr. Mayor, if you will.
It is. All right, I move that we adopt the agenda with the change of combining number 12 and 13. Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. We're to review and adopt the following minutes. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes for June 26, 2025, joint session, Town Council, Town Planning Board.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes for the, uh, Town Council meeting for August 14th, 2025.
I'll also second that one.
Any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
And I'm also aye. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes for the special call Town Council meeting of August the 28th, uh, 2025.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for a minor change, Mr. Wagner. Over on page six, five pages here. Cancel comes back in from closed session, and it's noted that I, I voted to go back in, into full session, but I would appreciate it if a note was inserted that I joined the meeting and progress while it was in closed session, just for clarification, if that's okay with cancel.
With, without objection? None, if you would, please. Okay, we have a Stokesdale fire report.
We got a, we got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote on that one. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrath?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Now we have the fires, Fire District report. Mr. Wagner, I have that, if you want me to cover that myself. Okay? Our report, I've got it, I've got it right here. This is a report for August. There were fire-related incidents of 16, medical incidents of 48, other incidents of 33, 97 total incidents. This came from our chief, Todd Golden. We have with us this after, this evening, uh, a deputy sheriff to give us our, our sheriff's office report. If you would, please, just identify yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deputy Bell with the Guilford County Sheriff's Office. I patrol District One, which consists of Summerfield, Oak Ridge, and Brown Summit, and of course, Stokesdale. And as for Stokesdale, Sheriff's Office responded to 155 calls of service, which resulted in 10 case reports. We're seeing a rise in check, check thefts countywide from both residential mailboxes and post office blue boxes. The stolen checks are being washed, altered, and made out for differing amounts to the various individuals. We'd like to remind residents that the safest way to pay bills is to set up an online payment option. Otherwise, walking the check to the post office for mailing is the safest option. A check mailed by the town was reported stolen on 8/28, and the case remains under investigation.
Anything else?
No.
No, sir.
Thank you so much, appreciate you being here.
Could I ask you, sir?
Yeah.
Ask you something. Have, have we had any more checks that went to the post office that have, have, uh, had something happen to them like our check? Has there been anything else reported like that?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Okay. I, I can't, I can't speak on that.
All right, we're just, just wondering.
But as of the town check, that's still being investigated.
Right, right, thank you.
I do, I do have one, just a smaller quest. If, um, as we get darker at night, if you guys would just make sure you're making park at night, and we've got, um, park hours posted one hour after sunset, so as it starts getting dark, anything here, anybody here after dark should, should not be here.
If the lights are not on.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
I don't. Thank you for what you do.
Yep, yeah, we appreciate it.
Okay, administrative report, Mr. Wagner?
Okay, so we'll start off with the water system report. There were four water meters installed for the month of August. Forty-three water meters are in stock, 14 applications for transfer of service and water meters in, 20 water meters and applications on hold for builders, 15 work orders, 46 811s, 898 water bills mailed out, 20 reservations or rentals. The admin report was included in everybody's packets. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, but I won't, uh, bore you with all the details if, if you don't want it.
All right, we're good. You have anything for the planning board?
Uh, yes, I do have a planning board report. At the regular meeting on Thursday, August the 28th, the planning board, um, approved a preliminary plat case, uh, for case number 25-02-SUB00427-7848-US-Highway-158. This was a site plan for RS30 zoning for an 80-lot subdivision to be connected to the public water system. At that same meeting, a site plan, uh, case number 23-02-SITE-0022 at 7563 NC Highway 68. Uh, that was also approved. That was for highway business, and it was a warehouse for self-storage development off of Highway 68. And then at that same meeting, Site Plan Review Case 25-02-SITE-00110 at 774 NC Highway 68 was approved, and this was for a, I believe, a substation, um, for Duke Energy. And the next regular meeting of the planning board will be on Thursday, September the 25th.
Very good. Any questions? Mr. Rigsby, do we have anything from the property committee?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. And, Mr. Wagner, I believe you're going to do our parks improvement committee report?
Yes, so this is a report provided by T. Stevenson, Town Park Improvement Committee Chairman. As reported last month, the Colonial Snack, Stack Snake Fence and Boulders have been installed at the inch weight of the Stokesdale Town Park. To complete this project, 20 drift rose bushes will be planted in front of the fence in the next few weeks. Renovation of the sign at the entrance of the town park at Martin's Meadows has been completed, being mindful of the maintenance of the area around the sign, landscape fabric, and a layer of mulch, and six solar lights have been installed, providing illumination of the sign without increasing the time or effort in lawn maintenance. Uh, the committee continues to consider options to repair, replace the hinged doors, the large message board in front of the concession stand at the Stokesdale Town Park. We've received pricing on several options from the local vendors, but are seeking information on additional options. Once received, we will schedule a meeting of the committee to discuss the most logical, cost-effective option. The committee continues to evaluate various options to enhance safety, security, and aesthetic appeal of the park facilities, and there are currently not any scheduled meetings of the Town Park Improvement Committee, but a special call meeting will be scheduled soon to discuss the repair of the bulletin board.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, we move on to financial reports. You got a full schedule tonight, don't you, brother?
Yes, correct. Uh, so Ms. Thacker could not be here tonight, however, she did provide me with some notes. For the general fund, uh, the Bank of Oak Ridge CDRs has a balance of $2,847,748.54. Total investment earnings and his interest earned this fiscal year, year-to-date of the general fund is $18,674.45, of which $9,338.25 is for the month of August. Accounts receivable, shared overhead expenses for the August reimbursement was $116,172.87. Total fiscal year-to-date shared overhead expenses has been $26,905.34. The total accounts receivable for August is $16,974.26. Total assets, that includes the general fund and accounts receivable, is $3180,458.41. During the August Town Council meeting, council requested to move $100,000 from the general fund to a CDR. This was moved to the Bank of Oak Ridge money market account to hold, and then was transferred to the CDR for two years at a rate of 3.5%. The ARPA fund balance is currently $11,300. These monies are to be spent by December 31st of 2026.
So I got it?
That's, that's it for the general fund. You want me to move on to the Water Enterprise Fund?
Please, if you would.
So the Bank of Oak Ridge CDRs has a total of $1,624,998.27. The total investment earnings and his interest earned for the fiscal year-to-date for the Water Enterprise is $14,029.49, of which $7,026.79 is for the month of August. Under accounts receivable, the water sales includes active and inactive is $41,103.72. This includes August billing. There are zero accounts past 90 days, and there are zero accounts inactive past 90 days, active and inactive. Total assets of the Water Enterprise account is $3,061,224.87. Total accounts payable for August is $72,906.4. That concludes the report.
Very good. Any questions?
Mr. Wagner, it, it, I'm sure this is a minor thing, but I see we paid $1,200 to postal service for postage for water bills. Is that for a supply of stamps for more than one month? Tell me it is.
It's not a supply of stamps. We have an account with them, and, and that pays for a set of water bills for, uh, I want to say that's probably good for anywhere from four to five months worth of water bills. We don't have to put stamps on each bill.
Just making sure something doesn't just jump up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a minute right now, if I may, just between, before we do a public comments. I have a proclamation, Town of Stokesdale, a proclamation in recognition of Constitution Week, whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution, by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commensurate, which, excuse me, which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year for the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Mike Crawford, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Town of Stokesdale in the state of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, to be Constitution Week. And I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the farmers, excuse me, the framers, and the Constitution had in 1787 by originally protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through its guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness hereof, I have heretofore set my hand, cause the great seal of the Stokesdale, North Carolina, to be affixed to this document and 11th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2025. And there's my signature. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we will open up for, uh, public comments. I would ask that, uh, we limit them to three minutes. Uh, Ms. Byrd, I'm going to call on you first, since you put out a card. Welcome.
My name's Molly Byrd, and I'm here on behalf of friends of Stokesdale. I just wanted to remind everyone that our Fourth Annual Farmers' Day is, uh, coming up. It's a week from this Saturday on September the 20th. Uh, we have lots of activities going on there, and we hope that we have lots of people show up and come to our event. Uh, you can check everything out on Facebook, and we hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you have a good turnout. Okay, our next item. Uh, I'm sorry, would anyone else like to speak? No, we'll move right along. Next item is annexation request of .81 acre portion of property located at 8299 Walter Combs Way, Guilford County Tax Parcel, 220554. Town of Stokesdale Town Council will consider a petition for voluntary annexation, for voluntary contiguous annexation. The request concerns the annexation of the .81 acre portion of the property located 8299 Walter Combs Way, also identified as a portion of Guilford County Tax Parcel, 220554, into corporate limits of the Town of Stokesdale. This one is... Mr. Wagner, help me out. Who do we have here to?
If you want to go ahead and open it up?
Open, I'm sorry. I am opening that public hearing for that, um, said annexation.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, we don't have a staff report, I believe. We could call Mr. Greco.
Mr. Greco?
Evening, Bill. Good evening. Bill Greco, P.O. Box 347, uh, Oak Ridge, with Land Solutions. Uh, this annexation request, if you'll recall from the rezoning, uh, previous months, there was a change in the alignment of Walter Combs Way, which was previously the Town of Stokesdale-Gilford County, uh, boundary. We seek annexation to bring this little orphan triangle, if you will, into the Town of Stokesdale proper. Uh, it doesn't involve changing any property lines or anything else. It just annexes us into, uh, Town of Stokesdale. Any questions, comments, concerns? I'll be happy to address those. I don't know that a staff report would be substantially different from what I've just told you. And again, if you're familiar with it from the rezoning, it's a, it's a very small piece. That's it right there.
Bill, when I was reading it, we got to rezone it too, right? Is that correct? It's got to be rezoned?
I was optimistic that, uh, we would have that rezoning tonight in conjunction with this hearing, and I'm going to be as candid about that as I can. I did personally, as I stand here this evening, don't know anybody, whether that be myself, uh, certainly Guilford County staff, nor Robbie. I don't think we understand the process. I understand there is a time limit associated with that, a 60-day, once it's annexed, I believe. Me personally, I was under the impression that that is called an original zoning, and that the town can initiate that action.
Yeah, the town, the, the, uh, there are several ways you can do it, I think. But you could, you could do it, which costs you money, and I don't want to see that, because you've already paid to do the other one. And I think we can do it, but we can't... Didn't you have conditional zoning, any conditional zoning on what you got now?
We did, and if I recall correctly, from that hearing, um, we kind of collectively mentioned that towards the end of that public hearing, that what we would like to see is the identical zoning district with the identical conditions that are on the remainder of the parcel. So as this moves forward, if there's something we need to sign or document to that effect, we're happy to do so, but, uh, again...
I have one, would be personally willing, you know, for the town to do it, and because, we can't, we can't make it conditional. You would have to, you would have to put the, put that in, I believe.
Well, well, I...
He probably ought to handle this, Mr. Mayor.
The property owner would have to consent to it, so, so the town could submit a rezoning request, but then, um, Mr. Greco's would, firm, company would have to, um, consent to any written conditions on it. So, because those conditions don't currently apply to this property that hadn't yet been rezoned.
But we wouldn't want any more than what is on the other property. We just want the same thing if we would. It, I, I, I'm speaking to myself, though. That would be the only thing, just the same, don't want any more.
And the 60-day period that he was referring to, so the statutes say that if you annex property and you don't give it an initial zoning, um, when you annex it, and there was no request for initial zoning made, uh, here, then the county zoning applies for 60 days.
Can we give him, can we do the rezoning tonight with this?
No, because it hasn't been noticed before hearing, so we can't do it.
Mr. Winfrey, I thought we covered this when we rezoned the other property that we, at, at least conceptionally, but I thought we had this covered, that when it was annexed, that the town would go ahead and give this annexed parcel the same zoning that we previously granted to the larger parcel, is, is what I remember. Are you sure we hadn't covered this base already?
I don't recall, um, trying to think, I don't recall that we addressed the initial zoning, and that has to be done pursuant to a advertised hearing, so go ahead.
I remember the part where we give it the initial, the town can give it the initial zoning classification during the annexation process.
Right.
So, I, I thought that we agreed that he would receive that same zoning for the annexed parcel that he currently has for the larger parcel. So, and we were trying to, I mean, I know I meant, we, we mentioned, or I, I know I did, trying to save him a lot of process on, on the tail end of this, so unnecessary delay and what have you, so. If, if there's a way for us to annex it and assign him, the, the applicant, the, the same zoning that he has on the parcel we rezoned, isn't that within our power to do?
Not tonight, I don't think, because I don't think an initial zoning wasn't advertised, um, for tonight, in other words.
But, but, but I thought by operation of law, we can assign the zoning that we want at annexation.
Robbie, we can't, well, a couple of things. We, um, you still have to have a hearing on what the initial zoning should be.
Well, you have been to law school, you got me there, okay.
So, you had to have a hearing, and I guess, and what I contemplated was there would be a hearing on, uh, on annexation, and if the annexation was allowed, there would be, immediately be another hearing, um, for rezoning at the same time, but there was no request. Mr. Greco didn't submit a request for rezoning, for initial zoning, and, and the council did not submit a request for initial zoning. So there was no request for initial zoning made that would allow a hearing on that tonight.
Bill, what, what is the zoning for that triangle right now with Guilford?
Bill, what, what is the zoning for that triangle right now with Guilford County?
It's currently zoned A.G. with Guilford County. If it will help, and, and again, when I mentioned the confusion, if it will help, certainly the applicant would agree to an original zoning request with conditions that match the remainder of the parcel. Town has all those conditions on file. They're, they're not hard to find as far as that's concerned, so, again, Mr. Jones, your thoughts are exactly aligned with mine. What the intent was for that to happen this night, it obviously hasn't happened. We need a public hearing, but we're not going to object to it, and we would need the town to take the lead, because when we make inquiries downtown through planning, they don't seem to have a handle on the process either, and are unwilling to put it out there.
Okay. Mr. Winfrey, is any problem after tonight that, with the town initiating the rezoning hearing?
That's fine, and as a matter of fact, you could, you could add an agenda item tonight to, to further direct that the town initiate a rezoning of this. You just can't give a conditional zoning. You can request his zoning, and then Mr. Greco can consent in writing to any conditions he wanted to put on.
And the advertised period would be thirty days.
Right, and then we'll be hearing from the planning board, and then come back here.
Ten days.
Mr. Greco, let me ask you, is the, is the rezoning a condition of the annexation request?
No, sir.
Okay, so you're not planning to use that property between now and the time that we may be able to get it rezoned?
No, sir. What, what, split zoning in and of itself is not illegal. So currently, we have a parcel of land. Part of it is in Stokesdale, and it's zoned CZHI.
Right.
That little triangle, as of this moment, is in Guilford County, and it's zoned A.G. So we can use the property only to the extent it's an A.G. use on that.
Right, I understand.
We have no intention of doing anything up there in the short term, so the...
Okay, so we're not delaying you other than this hearing?
No, sir.
But Chuck, kind of to your point, when we do have an initial zoning, it can't be CZHI, it needs to be HI.
That's right, and then if he, and then if he agrees to conditions to be applied to that, then, then we could adopt those conditions.
He can't, he has to offer the conditions, doesn't he? I mean, we...
That's right, that'd be, well, he can consent to them. He, he can offer them a...
Yeah, we can't, yeah.
That's right, so we, we would do a HI, then he could consent to the conditions being added to it.
Has to be advertised as CZ.
It'd be the right thing for us to do the zoning and not have, cause him all the...
That's right.
You know.
Right, we do need to advertise it as a CZ zoning, so I guess we could advertise it, ask for CZ zoning, but not, but then he has consent to the condition, so we may have to just work with him before we actually advertise it.
Well, it wouldn't be appropriate to make a motion right now since we hadn't voted on the annexation, but we could do so after the annexation.
Correct.
Okay, so let's map this out from an initial zoning standpoint. Today's September eleventh, the, will this go to Planning Board first?
Right. And they're, they're meeting two weeks from tonight.
That's right, so if you, if you would like for this to go to the Planning Board, it'll need to be noticed by Monday at the absolute latest. That's your ten-day bank, so we'll have to get a notice to the county tonight. I can do it after the meeting tonight, if, if you guys want to do that.
Yeah, well, I mean...
We need to get it over with.
I guess I, for one, do, but I'm just trying to map this out. So zoning at the late September Planning Board, back to Town Council at the October Town Council meeting.
Let me make sure we're good on days. I don't doubt that that's it, but it's just...
That's it?
Council's early, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, make sure. So if we have the meeting on the twenty-fifth, it's on the ninth. Yeah, we'd be fine. You'd have enough time. Council meetings are early next month, so I just want to make sure we still have ten days, what we're good, because it's on the ninth, but the Planning Board meets on the twenty-fifth.
We're good, though.
You're good. We can meet that ten-day requirement.
Okay.
We'll just have to get the county to work with us on getting it advertised on their legal website ASAP.
So, we make a motion?
Well, so right now, we're in a public...
Annexation first.
Yeah, we're...
Excuse me.
You know, if, if there's any additional questions for Bill, now would be a good time to ask those. If not, we want to let anybody in opposition speak.
Are there any additional questions?
I think this is pretty cut and dry.
I don't think I have any. We, we might ought to listen to anybody that wants to object to the annexation.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll close the public hearing.
We need to ask if there's anybody opposed.
I thought you said, okay. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to the annexation? If not, I close the public hearing. And now we go for a motion. Mr. Foy?
Sure. Make a motion to adopt ordinance, oh, two thousand and twenty-five, number four, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the Town of Stokesdale, North Carolina, at the property located at eight-two-nine-nine Walter Combs Way, Stokesdale, North Carolina, two-seven-three-five-seven. This is Guilford County Tax Parcel, two-two-zero-five-five-four, which is owned by D.C.K. Properties LLC.
I'll second the motion. We have any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
All right. So, so Chuck, Robbie needs to advertise very soon, tonight, tomorrow. Okay. This public hearing for the Planning Board, that'll be in a couple of weeks. What zoning should he advertise?
I think with, with the consent of the applicant, we can, we can propose conditional zoning, conditional zoning HI, which I think is the same zoning as the other property.
With the same conditions that mirror the rest, and is that okay with the property in our...
And then we'll need to, for Mr. Greco to sign a consent, that that, that the applicant consents to those conditions, and then we'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Tell you what we may do is, I can, I can, after the meeting tonight, I can prepare a draft notice and have Chuck review it before I send it to the county. I can also send essentially a request for consent to the applicant tonight, and then we can get all that tomorrow, and I can send it to the county and ask them to get it on there by Monday.
The county wouldn't need to see his consent necessarily, so...
They wouldn't, that's right. They, yeah, they wouldn't need to concede the consent.
So who at the county is going to be responsible for putting it on their advertisement portal?
The clerk to the Board of Commissioners.
Robbie?
Correct.
Thank you. And they have to have it by Monday. If we, if we miss the Monday deadline...
It has to be posted by Monday.
It has to be posted by Monday. That's right. I'll, I'll say this, since we started this system back in, gosh, over a year ago now, they have a online portal, and that portal, if you want to submit something by Monday, I think you have to have it submitted by Thursday. Oh, that, that's deadlines today, so we have to do it tomorrow, so I'll have to send them a email request that they get it added. So typically, it's not been a problem. I don't foresee it being one, but it does scare me that we don't have the ability to put it on there ourselves.
I understand.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll reach out to the clerk's office.
Thank you, Robbie.
But that, that zoning would be consistent, was it conditional use zoning HI for heavy industrial?
Right, I think that, that was the current, that was the zoning for the, for the main of the front.
Yeah.
Correct.
And then we'll have to take care of the conditions.
Correct.
Okay.
But they actually need to advertise the conditions.
We'll need to advertise the conditions. Good news is, I still have, we just, we just did this for the other nine acres, you know, what, three months ago, so it's going to be the same notice. It's just new dates and a smaller piece of property, so the conditions I've already got in writing, so. And I think it's in the packet here from our letter that we sent to the applicant back when the other portion of this parcel was approved, so, all good.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Okay, old business items. Consideration of Proposal for Copier/Printer Service Agreement. Mr. Landrith, I believe you have this. This is continued from August fourteenth.
All right. Robbie, you've got the memo. Let's see, what item is that? All right, we've got the, the copier lease coming up, what, the twenty-fifth? Is that right? September the twenty-fifth, it'll be over. He did not get a contract in, correct?
That's correct, yeah. I reached out to our representative at Grand Creech and kind of told him where I thought that council may be headed in this, and, and asked for an equipment maintenance agreement. He wasn't able to provide one before the meeting today, but I do think it would mirror that, that we've already had for the last six years now, so I think it's just a very general contract that they use. It's just that now, instead of, essentially, we've been leasing this machine for the last six years. Consider the twenty-fifth to be our final payment. It will be paid in full. It now belongs to the Town of Stokesdale here in a few weeks. So essentially, we have a machine that we own with a service agreement, a maintenance agreement, that is coming due on the twenty-fifth, and now your options are to keep the machine and not be covered, or keep the machine and, and pay Grand Creech to do a simple equipment maintenance agreement. No more lease, just pay them to maintain the toner, maintain the servicing, the labors, and the parts up to a thousand dollars.
Is the sixteen-hundred copies a month, black and white, sufficient for us?
Yes, that's what we've had for at least the last three years. I think we, we've never gone over on black and white, and we only went over on color by about seventy copies, so we did pretty good.
Okay, so we have, we, we basically will have the copier, we knew that, and then we will have, they're going to extend to us a service agreement.
That's right.
Okay, that, that's, that's really what I was asking for.
Now, that's paying, that's paying for the toner and any minor things, that'd be like jams, cleanings probably.
Cleaning, rollers.
But now if a board or something goes out like that, it's over.
No, 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 yeah, that's correct.
And hopefully the contract ends if we have to junk the...
That is correct. If they deem that the, the machine ever required labor or a part that costs more than a thousand dollars, they would deem the machine essentially obsolete, and the agreement would terminate at that time.
Or if the parts are not available.
Yeah.
Correct as well, yeah.
Yeah, you can't get parts fixed.
We're just trying to stretch it out.
I don't think we should put a little fluff in here in case they increase. I don't see why they'd increase it, because they're actually going to do less work and less risk, so. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we enter to a contract that we don't have in our hands for a hundred-and-sixty-one-ninety-two per month, and let Robbie and the mayor execute it.
Second.
And we'll be glad to have Mr. Winfrey review it, sorry.
You feel like we need to show it to Mr. Winfrey, Mr. Landrith?
No, I don't.
All of our contracts, I have a, I have a, and Mr. Foy and I have talked about this, I've got a signature sheet that I attached to every contract that we have that says that the mayor's authorized it based on a vote of council. I've attested his signature. Kim makes sure that it's pre-audit certified, and Chuck checks it for legal sufficiency, so that's kind of a standard now, but...
I mean, if that's what y'all want, I'm not trying to stop the show.
Gotcha.
But if you got the same contract...
Yeah.
That's been reviewed before, I don't see any reason to waste this time. But if that's what you're doing, I'm not going to stop you, I mean.
That's good.
Yeah, I give y'all the authority to execute.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. That's, that's okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
And I am also aye. Consideration of Updated Work Order Requirements for New Water Tap Installations. Mr. Jones?
I didn't do it.
This is, this is continued from the fourteenth, August fourteenth.
I know this is in our package, because I saw it earlier today.
It's number ten.
Well, Mr. Landrith has rescued me once again. I guess everybody's read this, we covered it last month, the reason for it and so forth. I don't know if there's any point in going over that. At the risk of becoming a nanny state, I would like to add, in parentheses here, Mr. Where it says the marker must be driven approximately one foot in the ground, I would like to add a recommendation that the, the owner wear safety goggles, use gloves, and be sure they get a locate, an eight-one-one locate if necessary, just so we covered all our bases, if council's agreeable to that.
Unenforceable, I would think, but I have no, I have no objection to it.
Well, I can't object. It's my election, and that'd be my fault.
Any objection, any concern? Without objection, let's add it.
Okay, with that said, I want to make a, make a motion that we approve this as a policy for Town Council to utilize for the installation of new water taps that are on our existing mains. And let's see, that would be proposed updated work order requirements for new water tap installations prepared at the request of Councilmember Tim Jones for consideration by Stokesdale Town, Town Council, September the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not crazy about this policy. It just seems, it just seems like too much. From my perception, and I could be dead wrong, ninety-five percent, maybe even more, of the folks that come in here and sign up for new water are just, I would think they would say, you guys are the utility, put it where it makes the most sense. You know, we're talking about rebar, a three-foot piece of rebar. I'm not saying what we have now is perfect, but I don't see this being much of an improvement to what we have right now. I'm, I'm not opposed to having something like this, it's just...
Could we add into it that, that the, the request could also include a waiver? The waiver would basically say that, that it can be placed wherever the installer thinks it should be placed, to relieve the, the applicant from physically having to do that? My thought would be, if you've got a special situation, which is what's brought this thing to the forefront, where somebody is, is asking for something that's a little out of the norm, then if it's a little out of the norm, let's be sure we don't have to do it twice. I, I think that's the goal, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jones. Would a waiver be appropriate?
Every time we've installed an existing tap, we've asked the owner, where do you want? And, and as, you know, we've had a problem from time to time, some confusion from time to time. The last event is what motivated me to make this suggestion. If council doesn't want to do it, then, you know, fine by me.
Further discussion?
I just, I, I don't want a town employee or town vendor to be telling a property owner where their taps going. I want them to be able to request the location of their tap. It gives them the most freedom.
Let me, I have that back right quick. You could add a provision that says that if they have no preference to where it goes, they could indicate that also. If that's, if that was Mr. Foy's.
Mr. Foy, if you want to continue this and, and work on it with staff and tweak it to, to your liking, I have no objection. I'm just trying to get us to a simpler solution than having a crew on the side of the road and not knowing where a tap goes for sure.
Understood. I won't be working on this with staff, so I'm, I'm good with voting on it tonight.
Without further discussion, Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Nay.
Mr. Jones?
I'm aye.
And I am also aye. Next item. This is a discussion of the concession stand at the Stokesdale Town Park. That's mine. Mr. Winfrey was kind enough to provide to us a license agreement. I think you each have a copy of that. My, my suggestion in this is, in the, under the, the item license, number one, license, it lists that concession stands are limited to prepackaged food, prepackaged drinks, and hot dogs, which may be warmed. I would... I would strike that because it's going to require that the hot dog be prepackaged. Any warming would have to be done with a microwave since we don't have any grill or anything like that. It just doesn't need to be there. To me, it, it, it opens, it suggests that they can serve a prepared hot dog.
I was thinking with the roller type things, is that?
Can't do that.
Can't do that?
Unless you, unless you get, you can get, if they're willing to get all of the permits and they're willing to bring the facility up to standard, then as far as I'm concerned, they can sell anything that's legal in the state of North Carolina.
So you're saying that one of those rollers, you had to have a permit for that?
Oh, yeah, you got to have a permit, you got to have a three-compartment sink, you got to have the walls covered in a, in a surface that you can wash down real easily. I think it'll probably even, it, and Guilford County, Guilford County is one of the worst. In Guilford County, it may even require a floor sink, I mean, yeah, a floor, a floor drain, which we do not have.
Like you're selling hot dogs all over Guilford County.
Yeah, every concession stand does this.
Concession stand?
They're, they're good hot dogs.
Concession stand, okay? I don't think, I don't think, I, I'll, I'll be glad to stand corrected on this, but I do not think you can serve a prepared food without a health inspection.
Well, Mayor, I, given your business experience, I'd give a lot of credence to what you're saying.
Well, I think they're, they're running a concession stand now down at Softball Field. I, I would be more inclined to just say that, you know, that they just can't prepare any cooked food and, and, you know, let them deal with the, if something needs a permit instead of trying to micromanage it.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think we should govern it at all. I think maybe add a sentence that, you know, what they do should fall under the Guilford County Health Department regulations, but other than that.
Yeah, let them have, let them have.
That definitely needs to be in there, that they have to meet whatever the Health Department requirements are.
Well, and the phrase after, after hot dogs, it's a subject to applicable regulations, so.
Yeah, it's there, you have it in there, you do have it in there. The next item is the monthly rent. My suggestion is that we set a monthly rent at a hundred and fifty dollars or whatever the increase in our expense is with operating that concession stand during the time of operation, whichever is greater.
The one fifty per what, I'm sorry?
The rent.
Hundred and fifty dollars per?
Per month.
Per month.
Have y'all talked to Parks and Rec about what you were going to do? I mean.
Several times.
There has been conversation about it.
I mean, so they.
I'm just making a proposal, if you don't want to go this, I have no desire to make money off of this.
Just asking a question.
I know, but I have no desire to make money, that's not my goal.
Say you was, I just asked if you, if you had actually talked to them about the figures and things, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Well.
You know, we do want us to vote on these things, so it's kind of like to do. It's no sense in voting on something if they haven't agreed to it.
If I may, Mayor. Mr. Wagner prepared an analysis of the power bills going back a year or so here. And he also additionally, doing the fine work he usually does, prepared an average for each season. So what we're currently spending down there for that meter in the winter is two hundred and sixty-five dollars a month. Spring average is ninety-six, the summer average is sixty-seven, and the fall average is eighty-five. So I've had a number of conversations with Parks and Rec and they are expecting to have to pay at least enough to cover the additional cost of electricity for their operation, which they, they're going to be running some refrigeration equipment and our, you know, possibly something like an ice cream freezer and microwave, who knows what? But it can only go up from there. Plus, the, we're not currently operating a hot water heater there, I don't think, so it'll have to be turned on, and that's kind of an unknown factor. So the cheapest average we have for this thing is over the summer at sixty-seven dollars. And so I, I would, I wouldn't want us to charge any less than a hundred dollars a month. The rest of it, you know, I don't really have a strong opinion about, maybe, maybe the rest of the council does. But we at least need to get enough to take care of anything that goes over the current power usage.
Okay, so insert a hundred dollars per month versus the hundred and fifty?
Well, we, we can, we can also do it this way, far as I'm concerned. We can, we can give them the space for a dollar a month and they just pay the, anything over an average for the power bill. Let's, let's say, I don't know what we'd get if we averaged all this together. Or actually, Mr. Wagner did that, it's eighty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. So we can look for a hundred dollar a month power bill and just let them, them pay anything over the hundred dollars and not worry about the rent. I'm okay with that. But I just, I want to be sure that y'all understood what we were currently paying for electricity there and how that was going to impact us there.
How do you write that in, Mr. Winfrey?
I'm not sure I understood.
Based on eighty-two, eighty, was it eighty-two dollars a month average?
Yeah.
That, 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 we're trying to at least cover that. So we set the rent at a hundred dollars. That would cover the eighty-two dollar average.
Right.
For the months that they operate it.
No, let me back up, Mayor, I think I've, I didn't make myself clear. We pay the power bill up to X amount and then Parks and Rec pays anything over that amount because presumably the extra usage would be them. So, so I'm saying that we set an average here, which at the moment is, is eighty-two dollars. And then they pay anything over the eighty-two dollars with the power bill. And then far as I'm concerned, they can, they can use it for, you know, ten dollars a month, whatever we need to do to make a valid contract. But they are a little concerned about being able to generate enough revenue to pay, pay the power bill and then pay the town.
My, my saying was that building separately metered, is that right?
It is separately metered.
It is separately metered.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And what I'm saying, Mr. Winfrey, is the current bill averages eighty-two dollars a month over the course of a year. It's got electric heat in it to keep the plumbing warm, and so it goes up in the winter naturally.
So that eighty-two dollars is a fixed cost for us? I mean, it's somewhat variable, but it's fixed, that we have to pay no matter what.
Yeah.
So anything we get from them is chipping away at that fixed cost. Now, with their usage, it's reasonable to believe it'll go up some. I don't think we understand how much yet.
Well, I'm just wanting to charge them, let them pay the power bill for anything over, over the average of eighty-two dollars a month, or some, some number council thinks is appropriate.
Can I suggest fifty a month then? You think that's reasonable?
It puts us losing thirty dollars a month right out of the gate.
No, no, because we're already covering eighty-two. We're already covering eighty-two, so if they commit to fifty dollars, that's going to be fifty dollars above the eighty-two that we are covering.
Just straight rent, yeah.
Yeah.
It contributes to the cost we're paying no matter what.
What I wanted, wanted to do is incentivize them to save power when necessary, when, when it's easy for them and so forth. And if, obviously, if they're paying the power bill, they'll be conscious of that, maybe not so much so otherwise.
Let me ask you this, so we're averaging for the year, you say we're averaging how much?
Eighty-two.
Okay, why don't we just do this? Why don't we just let them pay that light bill down there and let that be their rent? That'd be eighty-two dollars, and then whatever's over, it would, it would be, you know, it wouldn't be any question about it. The eighty-two dollars.
I'm agreeable to that.
Wouldn't, would, we pay our light bill.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeable to that.
And they can pay the, they can just pay the extra, and that'd be, you know.
So they're paying the entire light bill or just anything over eighty-two?
They can just pay the light bill, they can just pay the light bill for.
For, for.
I think.
Reimbursed the town for it, essentially.
I think administratively, it would be easier just to say you're going to pay the light bill versus trying to every month figure out what they owe.
You see what I'm talking about, don't you?
But guys, if I'm them, I, there's no way I enter into a contract without knowing how much that's going to cost.
Well, then we just need to do a, we, we need to forget the light bill and just do a fixed cost.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying.
I mean, that's fine with me, too, I'm just saying if we want to connect it to the light bill, that'd be the easiest way. That way, the light bill would come in, it wouldn't be no question about figuring this or figuring that, you just, you know. But I, I'm fine with, I'm fine either way anybody wants to do it.
Well, the issue is that the, you know, assuming light bill comes payable, I mean, comes to the town of Stokesdale.
Correct.
It's not going to go in their name.
No.
But we're going to pay it.
Correct.
And then, so it's a matter of being, how much will be reimbursed by them?
Correct.
And I'm suggesting a flat fee rather than a variable fee.
Right.
Well, you know something, I'd rather do a flat fee too, because then in a year, we can, we can redo it.
With that, they.
We feel like we need to.
And from their perspective, they can plan their, you know, is, is it worth it to them?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't object to a flat fee, but I would remind council that the water heater is not, not usually turned on there, so I don't know what that will, you know, might be a lot, might be a little, I don't know.
Is it electric water heater or gas?
Well, you just, you just got to figure in what's the flat fee. Your refrigerator's going to run it up, that drink machine down there is running that thing up too. I bet, you noticed the difference yet? It's not been down there long enough to be on the meter yet, is it?
I, I think we talked about a number of thirty dollars a month for that, you know, you're right about that?
So you're, you're hitting them on that. I, I think we should just do a flat fee, then we can work it out. How, how long is this contract for?
Till, till twenty-twenty-six, December thirty-first.
I mean, you have to do a flat fee for a year and then reevaluate it. I mean, if we lose a dollar or make a dollar, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I certainly wasn't trying to split hairs, but I just, not, not.
We're going to spend the light bill here.
Not, not knowing what they're going to plug in.
What is, what is the set fee? Is, is the fifty dollars that Mr. Foy suggests, is that, is that reasonable?
I don't know if it's reasonable or not, I'll accept it, you know, for the children in the park. And just as long as we're promising to reevaluate this after we get a year's history with this.
Yeah, 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 agreed, agreed.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so the motion is?
Well, the rent then, just to be clear, the rent then is they will be paying the town of Stokesdale fifty dollars per month?
Fifty dollars, that'll be the rent. Is there anything else in the agreement that anyone had any recommendation on, any suggestion?
I just want to call to council's attention this issue of the restrooms. So we're saying that the town's going to be responsible for cleaning the restrooms, still.
As we, as we are now.
Except that they are responsible if they damage them, you know, then they'll be responsible for that.
Yeah, they, not, not, not really. I mean, we, we take care of the restrooms, we got a cleaner that goes out there twice a week. And, I mean, you, you got soccer people that are now, and we don't do that. I mean, the soccer people could tear it up just like a football. But, well, I don't know why I'm saying that, they're all the same, it's all Parks and Rec. And all we're doing is letting them do the concession, they're not going to, I don't think it'd be using the bathroom anymore than, than they are now.
Well, I'm saying if somebody smashes the sink or smashes the toilet or something.
Well, there's, there's, there's a sink, there's a sink inside of that space, they can be responsible for that one and we'll clean the rest of it, clean, clean the bathrooms, just as we always have.
I think it states in here, it says that they will return the facility in the same condition that they found it in. So that would cover the damage to a sink or, or even a hot water heater in there.
Except for normal wear and tear.
Yeah, but just, just a reminder to the town staff and the town attorney, paragraph thirteen does require Parks and Rec to name us as additional insured and, you know, get us on that policy. So if somebody will be sure that paperwork's done.
Is there any other change?
I don't think so.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the lease agreement, we offer the lease agreement to the Stokesdale Parks and Recreation Center for the concession stand at our town park with the changes that we have noted.
I'll second the motion as we specify the flat rent of fifty dollars a month due on the first of each month.
That was one of the changes.
I, I will actually have further discussion, please.
Uh, okay.
Just if we're going to reevaluate after a year and we're mainly talking about running concessions for football, would we be better to reevaluate like September first of twenty-twenty-six instead of December thirty-first? Because that's putting a year and three months before we reevaluate.
No idea.
The, cause what the terms and termination of the contract are. So I would think before we entered into a new contract, we would want to reevaluate.
Mr. Rigsby, in my mind's eye, it'd be easier to do the reevaluation when we're doing the, you know, the budget and updating the fee schedule and so forth, when, when we do those financial things at the beginning of the year.
Well, I would suggest February of twenty-six. If I'm trying, if I think I'm understanding Jim correctly, you want to take a full football season, which will be four, four Saturdays next fall, into account, you want to see the costs associated with that?
Well, I guess, I'm not necessarily thinking about, I was thinking about this year. Because I was just thinking about, we're given a contract for fifteen months. We generally only go a year. So I would just think, and if we, if we wanted to evaluate the uses this year, wouldn't we want to sign the contract before the football season next year? So we have to adjust that a little bit before the season.
Maybe. I, I have a sneaking suspicion that this, next year will be the first time they use this for football.
So you don't think they're going to use it this?
I don't know, I mean, their first game is next Saturday, they, they, if, they have, you know, there's a lot to be signed and planned for them.
Okay, I understand.
Next Saturday?
The twentieth. The twentieth.
God, that slipped up.
Yeah.
You know, they're trying to get those holes due, and they hadn't reached that, they reached out to me and it's, you know, they've, they've got to reach out to the contractor, you know what we said? Did, did the motion get, did?
Then I, I'll withdraw my conversation then, if, if, if we're not sure they'll even be in operation yet.
I mean, they may or may not, but there's a lot to be done before then to be in operation.
All right, let's just go with the date that's listed then.
In the paragraph fourteen?
Yes.
And I've reminded too that, as it's currently written, either side can terminate with ten days' notice. So if we think it's unsaid, if they think it's unsaid, factory, anybody can terminate it.
Neither one could.
All right, so Mike, you had a motion, you put the dollars in it, did you get a second?
I second the motion.
We did. My only other concern is, the rent doesn't start until they actually begin the operation. So to Mr. Foy's point, if it, if it doesn't happen this year, it's going to be a moot point until the fall of, of next year. So we're not trying to impose this on them beginning October one.
When they actually take possession of?
Yes. Is there any other, any other discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Ju- just, just so we get it in the minutes, council, I'm sorry here, Mr. Wagner. We need to make sure it's clearly understood that the town has to have access through this space to the plumbing chase to service the bathrooms at all times, et cetera.
That's in the agreement, I believe.
It is. Well, just, let's get it in the minutes too, if you would please. All right, sorry guys, I'm, I'm aye.
Okay, and I am also aye. We're going to, new business, new business, consideration of requests for land solutions, DTW Transport, Inc. Mr. Jones, I believe you have this one, and we're going to combine that with the consideration of minor site plan review, case number twenty-five dash oh seven dash site dash zero zero one two two, located at eighty-two ninety-seven ZZ and eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way.
Well, I have to.
Jones and Mr. Landrith, I believe.
Yeah, Mr. Land, if you want to go first?
No, not really, because I'm, you know.
All right, well, I.
Mr. Greco.
Well, I, the, the reason I asked for this on the agenda is because I too have had a lot of experience with Guilford County. I really don't think they mean to be the way they are, it just happens, it's a large organization, you know. It's just hard to move the ball down the field with those folks. And so I, I wanted to be sure that this council addresses the complaint that Bill Greco sent to the town of Stokesdale to this town council that's labeled Agenda Item Number Twelve. He has made a number of bullet points here, gone into detail that's appropriate for the situation. I feel that the trouble with it is, I don't have the solution for him. But I want to make sure that this letter is received and read by this council, and I want to make a motion that we receive this into the record and attach it to this set of minutes. And so I want to do that first off, it doesn't have a date on it, but it's four pages signed, signed, well, it's not signed, but it's identified from William F. Greco Jr. Maybe he would sign a, a copy for the clerk. And I want to be sure we receive this into the record, so that's, that's number one. So what I want to do is have us vote to receive this. And I wanna be sure we receive this into the record, so that's, that's number one, so what I wanna do is have us vote to receive this.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
There's, uh, if I'm not mistaken, this is, Mr. Greco sent all this to us in an email. I don't know if he included staff, but I can forward Mr. Wagner the email for a timestamp.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landry?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. Mr. Jones, I'll give it back to you.
All right, with that said, uh, I'm sort of dependent on Mr. Winfrey here as to what we can exactly review and possibly vote on to move this property owner, this business and Mr. Greco, towards a, a final solution for their, the property they're working on. I understand they, uh, they're ultimately gonna construct a building, I understand that they're trying to get a site plan done. I would be open to having Mr. Greco just address us directly and let us have his, you know, hear his beef, and then we go from there. Is that okay, Mr. Winfrey?
That's fine.
Bill Greco, P O Box three-four-seven Oak Ridge, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for, uh, first of all, placing us on the agenda this evening. I believe I've covered technically, uh, why we're making this request. The gist of it is simple, we submitted a site plan, paid the appropriate fees on July second. As of tonight, seventy-one days have passed and we've yet to have any progress. I've outlined to you in that correspondence, uh, the back and forth interaction that we've had with the contracted Guilford County staff, uh, with no resolution. I also outlined in there the fact that the procedures, um, have been fluid, which is unusual. From memory, I think I went into business in ninety-five, four, been doing this a minute. Uh, minor site plans have always been a staff review, uh, that's how this one started off. The day we submitted it, uh, we had interaction with Guilford County, said, hey, there's two items on here that you've commented on, this is on July second. The way we see that, that's an appeal to council. The reason I say that is, if you look in the ordinance, and I can pull all these ordinances up with, with Mr. Wagner's assistance, the ordinance is what it is, there's no perfect ordinance, there's no perfect procedure. Certain responsibilities and, uh, things lie with different folks at different levels. However, it's not unlike anything else you do in life from a customer service basis. If you've paid for a product, you don't feel like you've gotten your money's worth. May I speak to your manager? He's not here, may I speak to the supervisor? He's not here either, okay, let me speak to the owner. Uh, that's where we're at this evening, is we are completely stuck and not able to move forward. That is kind of one ball of wax, it's really, the, the actual comments on the site plan are fairly simple. But I would mention that the published schedule for any municipality whereby it has a submission date, a planning board date, and a town council date, that schedule is used by more people than you realize. Millions of dollars of transactions are based on that schedule. So when you get a piece of property under contract, you have a due diligence period that expires, you set that up based on that schedule. So this particular landowner on this project, on the rezoning, we didn't have a scheduled rezoning hearing as it was supposed to be. Not our fault, certainly we had paid, done our part. That meeting was not hilt because the county failed to do part of their part of it. We immediately have to go back to the table with the attorneys, real estate folks, and rewrite the offer to purchase and extend the due diligence period, because at that point, we don't know, is it gonna be next month, month after? That costs money, that's not free. So that schedule's very important, that's adhered to. It's not hard, when the procedures change, the process, that's what makes it hard. So that's, that's why we're here this evening. And again, we can be more detailed, I'm trying to be mindful of, uh, your folks' time this evening, the length of the meeting, uh, and those in attendance to whom this may not be something they wanna sit through. But I'm happy to dig super deep into details on why we're here. Again, the ordinance says, here's what we do, scenic corridor items. The ordinance specifically states, council may approve this area, council may approve that area. So if we use process number one, it was coming directly to you anyway. If we had followed normal procedure, a minor site plan is reviewed at staff level. If you have a problem, you may go to planning board, you may go to council, depending on the issue. Like I said, there's no perfect book, there's no perfect procedures. That's why we're here. Our issues in and of themselves are fairly simple. The background information on that, I think it's important for council to bear with me just for a moment here. Uh, scenic corridor within town of Stokesdale has been problematic since day one. All staff, all planning boards, all town councils before you guys have had to deal with scenic corridor issues. If you start with the original land use plan that was adopted that contained scenic corridor language, there's always been controversy behind that as to whether, um, you know, it was thorough, it was complete, it was accurate. And frankly, the folks that voted on it, there's some, some thought that that, that whole thing started off on the wrong foot. Uh, if you go to the two thousand seven land use plan amendment, there was controversy there, I was at that meeting. Some folks in that meeting thought that the scenic corridor section had been removed from the land use plan. Turns out it wasn't. Our development ordinance has rules that tell you how to make rules. If that makes sense, here's a rule on how to make a new rule. Here's how scenic corridors work. Before, you can create a scenic corridor, the ordinance says shall, it used that, that word shall. You shall create a corridor plan. Why would you need a corridor plan? Well, the book tells you, you need to identify your, your scenic vistas, you know, where do the, the bears hibernate, these sorts of things, so that designers can look at that and say, okay, the corridor plan has told me what's important, now I need to design around that. We've never done a corridor plan, uh, that can be confirmed with Mr. Wagner. My point to you there again is just how confusing and improperly established all this scenic corridor stuff has been from day one. That takes us to the fact that we have a professional and manufacturing corridor with a scenic corridor overlaid on top of that. Think that one through for just a moment, if you Google scenic corridor, North Carolina, you're probably gonna get the Blue Ridge Parkway. Uh, there's one at the Outer Banks, there's a couple more smaller ones. Uh, I think we all, without any knowledge of an ordinance or land planning, understand what a scenic corridor is probably gonna be. Uh, so in Stokesdale, we have a document in the land use plan that says, this is our manufacturing corridor. Says to the world, if you wanna do something that's a manufacturing use, this is where we would like you to do it. Then we put a scenic corridor overlay on top of that. All past decisions, the point of this, all past decisions, whether that be staff, planning board, council, have had to take a healthy dose of just common sense and judgment and try to think through, what was the point of the scenic corridor guidelines? What were those folks thinking, what were they trying to put out there? So let's all just try to do a good job as not only designers, but as landowners and as reviewers and as approving bodies. So that means when you have road frontage, you, you try to pay some attention to how you arrange some things. There's some other specifics in there about fences, uh, architectural, those types of things in a corridor. But every decision-making body before you guys has faced the same types of dilemmas with any property in the scenic corridor. So at the end of the day, we have, uh, submitted a site plan. We need to move forward. A site plan is the foundation, there's, there's two important things with land planning, building a new building. First is zoning, if you don't have the right zoning, you got nothing. We've accomplished that. The second task is a site plan, and the reason why, a site plan is the foundation for everything else you do after that. Approving a site plan means, here's where your building's gonna go, here's your parking, you have the right number of parking spaces. Here's some buffers, here's some setbacks. That's the document you then use to go to DOT. That's the document you then use to go to the health department. You may need to go to watershed, you may need to go to erosion control, but you have to have a starting point. And that's what we're trying to do, is just simply get our starting point approved. The comments that we have are really, they're not great comments because they don't offer any, what, what's wrong? It's just regurgitation of the ordinance. One comment is if this use will involve outside storage of building materials, scrap pipe vehicles or equipment. Number two, outside processing or assembly operations, or number three, truck parking areas, then the development needs to be fully screened from Highway one fifty-eight. That's the comment. If you look at our plan, what we've done is we've placed our building and our parking far away from one fifty-eight as we can get. So that's us using our judgment to try to arrange things in a manner, uh, that respects the scenic corridor for what it's worth. The implementation of that and the reality of that is, most people don't understand this scenic corridor. It may surprise you to learn that at least half of this building is in the scenic corridor. It may also surprise you to, to hear that when it comes to that comment, I'll let you pick the site, I don't wanna point anybody out, anybody's business. There's not one in the scenic corridor, not one, where vehicles are fully screened. What does that mean? You physically can't see it? So that's, that's the comment that we are looking at, the first one, to just say, we've done our best, we've, we've arranged our site. We're not linear up on the, the highway corridor. And no other site, like I said, in town, truck parking, these type, all of these, how do you have a manufacturing corridor where you can't have truck parking, where you can't have equipment visible, where you can't have vehicles visible? That's a problem with that comment. And again, we're looking at established precedent within the town of Stokesdale with every site plan that has been approved post land use plan adoption. So, uh, there's no site in town that meets that. The second comment is, the corridor requires brick, stone or wood or other similar materials for construction on non-residential buildings. We have brick, we meet that. Second part of that is variation in building facade every thirty feet unless fully screened from public right of way. That's actually incorrect, the ordinance is, says every thirty feet on the front facade. So if you look at the front of our building, we have doors, windows, bay doors, there's variation every thirty feet. Council has to look at all this, take this in totality and decide whether or not those two comments just completely stop this project dead in the water and offer a solution, because the comments in and of themselves are not like typical comments that, remember, site plans are technical reviews, it either meets the requirements or it doesn't. So that's where we're at, so if they don't meet the requirements, we would have to have guidance. But we would seek, uh, to have both of those comments invalidated, addressed, disposed of, in whatever manner council sees fit. We would also seek conditional approval of our site plan. With the condition being, we comply with any other regulatory requirements, such as a driveway permit, a septic permit, the same as has been done dozens and dozens and dozens of times throughout the years.
Mr. Winfrey, is it appropriate for me to ask Mr. Greco some questions I have?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. Mr. Greco, uh, I have the foggiest recollection of us voting to allow the staff to approve minor site plans. But, but in my view, this is not a minor site plan, it's a major site plan. I don't know where we're off in this, in the, in the weeds with, with that one, but I, I recollect this somewhere back in my memory that that happened. But from my view, this is a, a major site plan.
This does not meet, this does not meet the ordinance definition of a major site plan. It does however, meet the ordinance definition of a minor site plan. I can't quote the square footage off the top of my head, but I believe it's the building maybe fifteen thousand square feet or something.
Well, you have to keep in mind, I'm a layman, you know, Mr. Winfrey's been to law school, you're a professional, and all I got is my common sense God gave me. So there's that.
Well, the, but just to briefly respond to that, the current ordinance, uh, requires the planning board to approve even the minor site plans.
Correct.
Does it say?
But that's not, that's not what we've, that's not what we've done since, I've been six years, let me just say that. In the past six years, to the best of my knowledge, minor site plans are a staff-level decision.
Well, I'm just telling what the, what the ordinance says, I mean.
It, it, it may have not gotten changed in the ordinance, but I remember addressing this somewhere, and I think it had to do with the normal changes that flow from Raleigh from time to time, it wasn't a separate issue. I, I, I remember it because I didn't like it, is, is really not remembered.
I think we voted on that back when we had a little bit of turmoil going on with a few things. You don't try to remember, seem to remember something like that?
I, I don't remember.
I'm sure it was us.
Well, I.
That, that, that did it, at, um, what, what?
I know what you're saying.
Was I on counsel?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 this was, um, that's why we're giving the planning board, you know, more leeway.
All right, so.
Or, or taking, I always taking it away.
So, so. I don't remember that.
It was just speeded up.
All right, so that's, that's, that's one of the things I've noticed in this process here that I'm concerned about. Number two, when you speak about fully screened, it's funny, Mr. Greco, that you would mention that, because when this was done on Thursday, May the eighteenth, two thousand and six, I was at that meeting. And I spoke against this site control overlay for a number of different reasons, but that is the one, that is one thing that's in the minutes that I mentioned, that they didn't define what fully screened meant. It's, it's in this set of minutes right here. And it's been a problem ever since, as you mentioned.
Agreed.
The ordinance review, it's neither here nor there, but the ordinance review committee went through this, you know, word by word, line by line, and, and recommended that it be, uh, removed, because so much of it is covered in other parts of our ordinance. It's, you know, the overlay's kind of unnecessary, in my view. And, and in my view, it's, it, I kinda know all the players and I know how this happened, I'm not gonna get into that in this public meeting. But you're right, we're, we're not, you know, we're not in the Appalachian Mountains, we're not on the seacoast, you know, it's, it's in a, in our industrial corridor down there. And, and I think, you've used this term before, I think our ordinance is arguing with itself here, in a sense. And so I, I have this question between you and the property owner, the applicant here, how would you define, how would you like us to define fully screened for your project?
For this project and for any project, what I would like fully screened to consist of is any combination of landscaping and/or placement of buildings, facilities, structures onsite, uh, that is comparable to, equal or exceeds established precedent, which is all the buildings that have been built since all this came about. So I can name a bunch of them for you, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, no, no, there, there's no, get into talking about other people's property.
We don't, we don't need to really point fingers, but.
They're not on trial.
I think the folks that are on this council in particular, um, are, are able to just kinda tap into your memory a little bit. And as you ride up and down this corridor, there's a sense of, uh, what we've done, some attention to how you lay things out. Everybody's got a nicer front facade on their building, and everybody's got a little bit of landscaping.
So, well, you know, one of the other things that's not commonly known with this thing is you can't use a chain link fence in front of your property without it being screened, you know, you can't secure your property, that, it, it just doesn't work.
And I agree with that, and I would also point out that again, when we talk about established precedent, there are instances, I, I can't quote the year off the top of my head, or the water tower built right up here that town of Stokesdale owns, it has a chain link fence with barbed wire on top of it, and there's not a single bush, flower, plant, anything in terms of, for. So that falls into what I'm saying as, when we establish precedent across the board, we take into consideration the, the best piece of property we have out there, and we take the worst piece of property we have out there, in terms of scenic corridor, we find an average, and I, I certainly believe this is above average.
You put a chain link fence up?
No, sir.
Was you gonna, was you gonna put it, okay, I guess, I guess the word they're talking about screening is, is where they're. Is where they've got all those marks like, it says. That's that's the question. I guess on the side, the one fifty eight side, is that where the question is you're, you know, they're trying to screen?
Essentially on the one fifty eight side and the and the problem is the ordinance itself. Fully screened is not defined. My, I can define fully screened.
What what y'all want to do? Y'all want, was y'all going to plant any bushes or?
We want to do that right there.
I mean, you were going to plant something there is what you're saying that.
So again, the front of our building.
Yeah.
Is treated differently architecturally than the sites in the back. It's we, we're going to face Walter Combs.
Yeah.
We've done what everybody else has done. We've got a nice street planting yard here in front of our property. Here we have, this is woods. You you can stand here. You can't see from here to here.
Right.
Can't see from here to here. That's existing woods. We still. Because this is residential, we still use the same rates and we're going to plant a significant buffer yard here. Because in my opinion, from a design perspective, what's more important to protect and screen is dissimilar uses. So we are. Commercial, CCHI zoning against the AG. Those two things don't play well together in in some regard. So we give them the benefit of all this planning. We are a significant substantial distance away from highway one fifty eight. And I would suggest to you again, when I look at historical precedent and what's going on. And landscape buffer yards, I'll pick on this building here. There's no street yard out front of this building. There should be hundreds of shrubs. What we have is seventeen, eighteen, twenty canopy trees. We have no under story trees. We have absolutely no shrubs out in that street yard. So again, when I compare what we're doing. Everything else that's gone on, I feel like we are above average. We're not trying to, we're not trying to skirt in with very bare measures.
So what was the problem with the planner? I mean, I can go up to there and look myself and what I see. On those places, they'd planted planted a few bushes. I mean, I know one that was, this would have been years ago. You've done our scenic corridor and you go there right now and there's the bushes still about the same size when they planted them. I think it's got some bad soil or something, but.
And and they don't screen. So when you plant, and I'm not, I can name them on paper, but I don't know them off the top of my head. A bush this tall?
Yeah.
That's never getting any taller than that?
Yeah.
How does that fully screen vehicles, equipment, trucks?
That's what was there, but y'all are putting, y'all got bushes you're going there with. And what you're concerned about. You you think it's not? It are they saying that that's not fully screened and that, but they didn't give you any information on what fully screened was? That's what you're saying, I guess.
Correct. It it's not a comment. Typically comments on a site plan, which is a technical review typically comment says something to the effect of. This is not wide enough. Change thirty to forty and you meet the ordinance. This isn't far enough away from the road. Change that. You don't have enough parking spaces. Change that. This is just regurgitation. These comments are just regurgitation of two sentences in the ordinance. With no guidance as to what specifically. Do we need to?
How long does it usually take you from the time you submit a site plan to to your approval?
Approval can vary. What is important and what is common. Is typically there is a thirty day turnaround. If you complete, here's the thing, when you submit a site plan. Guilford County staff has a checklist that they go through to make sure it's complete. So it gets a quasi review the day you hand it to them. They don't take it if it's not complete. So from the day you turn that in to the day it gets in front of whoever's making it the initial decision anyway. Whether that's staff or a planning board or some sequence of events, typically that's a thirty day process in most jurisdictions I work in. It's not a written rule. There are state rules, some things, and our ordinance refers to some in chapter seven. There are state rules on some plans that if you don't hear back in thirty days, it is deemed approved. And that's true even in Stokesdale.
Yeah, I've seen that on.
On on something, but yeah, thirty days is a reasonable term.
Bulldozing, what am I trying to say? Water?
Soil erosion.
Soil erosion.
Okay, Mr. Greco, we're 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 kind of talking about two different things here, aren't we? We're talking about screening the building and landscaping the building. But we're also talking about the the larger property, the. The storage yard that's currently there, for example. Is there any confusion here about what you're being asked to do versus versus screening the building versus screening the storage yard? Is Guilford County clear about that?
We don't know. They don't. I mean, let's just put the cards on the table. They don't communicate with us. They don't return calls. They don't meet with you. They don't return emails. They don't discuss it. So we don't know. And certainly at this meeting tonight, what we've proposed is an alternate landscape plan. If council has suggestions as to additional planning along highway one fifty eight or something of that nature, we're we're all ears. We're we're here to entertain it.
Well, we're we're looking, at least I am. I'm looking for a solution that works for everybody here. So. In my minds, I, you know, the separation between different uses, I'm I'm all for that, you know, appreciate you working on that and going to going to the max for that neighbor there. That's great. The rest of it is the motoring public. And I don't really want your applicant, your owner to to buy buy this expensive property and put this building on it and then hide it behind trees and bushes and berms to the point where. The customers can't find it, can't see it. So, you know, I don't like that part of this.
And neither do we.
And so there must be some middle ground here somewhere that the town can. Come to agreement with you folks with, you know, you know, a four board fence, a, you know, a planning bed A, a planning bed B, you know. There there must be a way to to get a definition for screened that we can all agree on for this property, for this, for your. Your client and our our citizen that owns this property.
I I see a conflict here that. What you talked about earlier, the scenic over corridor, to me, I agree thousand percent. None of this is scenic corridor material. You know, this is an industrial area. So why, why, why would we continue to allow the scenic corridor to overlay with it and not make that adjustment? Are we required for some reason to do that?
Well, I mean, the ordinance, I guess, as I understand, provides that this is a scenic corridor and until the ordinance is changed. That's the rule.
Because all those buildings are commercial, their cars are out front, trucks are out front. I mean, there's no reason that.
Storage units.
Mr. Winfrey, what would be the process to change or delete this site control overlay?
Well, if we had a, it could be done several ways. You could have a comprehensive land. Plan that lays out this is no longer a scenic corridor in the town of Stokesdale. Or we we limit the scope of the of the scenic corridor by doing X, Y and Z, limiting the width of it. Requiring less screening, or you just eliminate that completely. So, but that's going to require an ordinance change. The question tonight is, does does his plan comply with the ordinance or not? I think we've kind of gotten a little bit, not, do we like the ordinance?
I I I hear you when you say we can't waive the requirements of our own ordinance, no matter how much we like Mr. Greco and want to help him. So I I got that. But, you know, this thing has kind of been a thorn in the in the town side for a long time. And and this comes up a lot, confusion about this thing. And so, so could we advertise it as a public hearing and make a change in this ordinance or delete it in thirty days?
It needs some.
Well, it has to go to the planning board first. In other words, if you're going to make an ordinance change. You can request an ordinance change or request the planning board consider an ordinance change. They would make a recommendation back to you as to whether.
Okay.
It would have a public hearing and then they would.
So so restate it another way, we could ask the planning board to look at it. That's a thirty day public hearing period for the planning board to advertise and then meet. Then the planning board could rule on it, make a recommendation to the town council, then that would involve another thirty day waiting period, right?
Well, no, just ten days between the.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We we could do it in ten days.
I think Mr. Greco is trying to get something solved tonight that.
Well.
I think he may have some solutions, you know.
If 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 he's got some suggestions, then then.
I I have a pretty straightforward suggestion. The issues at hand are are three. One is the the screening. Of vehicles, of materials, of ad nauseam. If you don't believe that what we've done is sufficient. This is an alternate plan. I'm certainly willing to say we will plant canopy trees along highway one fifty eight. That's something. That's not dissimilar to what's found throughout town. It's identical to what's done at this building right here. So if we need to add canopy trees at the street yard rate along one fifty eight, if that will solve the fully screened question. We're happy to move on beyond that one. As to the building itself, I believe it's a hundred percent in compliance with everything here. Now, we want our building approved tonight. And that's the two, that's really the two issues.
You said there were three. I mean, if you put the canopy trees up now, I mean, that's where the, you know, the road is, so I mean, I.
I did say there were three, Mr. Jones.
Anybody else that's that's blocked off to where you can't see it, nowhere up and down through there. You are old, I mean, the old don't matter because it was there before, but the new, nothing new is is completely what you call completely screened. And I thought my stuff's been there fifteen, fifteen years.
Mr. Winfrey, at at the bottom of page three of Mr. Mr. Greco's complaint letter, you know, he's got. Two sentences here highlighted wherein the town council may approve other building materials that may meet or exceed the standards established by this ordinance. And in the other sentence, it says the town council may approve alternate building designs that may meet this stab, may be established by this ordinance. Given what these two sentences say, can we infer that that also gives this board the authority to define what fully screened means?
Yeah, yes, it's your ordinance, so you can interpret. So you could, for example, say. We interpret a type A planning yard or whatever we want to call it. Between one fifty eight and.
Walter Combs way.
And whatever this, this area, a type A planning yard, in our mind, constitutes fully screened. As a matter of interpretation of the ordinance, because, you know, it's it's your ordinance and the court's going to defer to your interpretation of your own ordinance. You can't ignore the ordinance, but I think any reasonable interpretation of it you can do and you can say. We think a type A planning yard. Of a certain width, and we have to figure out what that width is, would constitute. Fully screening within the meaning of the statute or the ordinance.
Okay, perfect. So, Mr. Greco, I'm not as familiar with the the planting yards as you are, the A, the B, the C planting yards. So are are you offering to screen using a type A or a B or a C? What? Can we get to the formula that's in our ordinance?
I'm offering to screen with a street yard. That only contains canopy trees. Same as what's, same as what's out front here.
So so like three inch caliber trees that would grow into a mature tree?
The the ordinance will tell us X number of canopy trees per one hundred linear feet of road frontage. So along highway one fifty eight. We will be required, we're offering to plant canopy trees.
And aren't those usually three inch caliber trees?
The ordinance describes the caliber required and I believe it's three. It could be two and a half.
Is there a depth of this yard, street yard?
Yeah, a street yard typically, it's eight feet by the ordinance. Eight foot wide street yard planted with canopy trees.
Does anybody disagree with it?
I I don't. No, I'm perfectly fine with it. I know Tim's a big tree guy, so.
Well, Jim Watson too.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I just can't get past it. We could pull out here, take a right and there's tractor trailers on the left, tractor trailers on the right. There's a.
There's the storage units, then there's PSI.
I'm going to tell you guys, I'm going to tell you guys something. I'm ashamed that I've sit on this board for six years and ain't brought this up because I got. Hoodwinked on this because I had a group of people that was going to go and be against this and I got told a story to put it nicely. And didn't go and Tim was there and he fought and everything, but one, one person that was elected. Put that in. The other two was was, the other two that voted on it were appointed people, you know, where people had dropped off the council. And the the other elected person voted against it and one person was was missing when this was put in. I I I've never liked it. I I I've never thought it was fair. It goes back nine hundred. They tried to put in fifteen hundred feet. I don't know if Tim remembers that. They were going to go fifteen hundred feet back. And it just, it it's, it was part, it was residential that was in it too. And it got struck down, I think by the Supreme Court, if I'm correct. They they were going, you know, make residential do it and they said, well, you can't do that. And and it got, I think it took, we were still doing it a couple of years. And it finally caught up.
Well.
But but.
You're sitting in the right seat to to make a change.
Yeah, well, like I said.
Right you're wrong.
Should have brought, it should have, should have brought it up because it's, you know, but you know, some people, I don't know.
So.
They said they think that's such a great thing.
I'd be comfortable making a motion on this for an eight foot planting yard, three inch caliber trees, if I knew what the spacing was going to be. Or at least a section in our ordinance. Do you know?
No, I don't. I don't know off the top of my head. Seventeen, no, seventeen sounds wrong.
Well, just wouldn't want it to be any question.
Can we look it up? I think it's.
And where would it be at on the?
There.
Because I wouldn't want you to get down to the county and have a problem with this definition that we're working on tonight.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to go in recess while they're?
Can it be true, uh, planning rate?
Okay, right now. Excuse me?
Two per one hundred linear feet of frontage.
Two per one hundred.
Correct, yes, sir, that's our.
So that's fifty foot spacing, I reckon.
Yes, sir.
Before we, before we do a motion, let me, let me, let's take a recess, if you would, just take a break.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, please. All right?
That's okay.
You the GFL guy?
I am.
And just if there was a motion made to change minor site from the planning board to staff, the ordinance should have been updated.
It was, I'm pretty sure it was done. Now, I, because I started thinking about that and we made a vote on something to do with the planning board. What happens?
We we made a recess.
Now, wait a minute, now I'm thinking about it. I'm thinking wrong.
Rick's been wanting to.
Somebody go out there and let him.
I guess.
And quit doing it.
We we sent the planning board.
Yeah, I had the planning board do it.
Somebody could have pleaded.
Yeah.
It's from the planning board.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's ever been removed from the plan.
Yeah, yeah, I think what it was with it, it didn't come to us. It was something that didn't come to us and we'd we'd give it to the plan. Because I got myself confused just a second ago.
There's a chance I might duck out here, really.
It wasn't, I don't think it was at staff. It's been recommended. He was recommending that one of these. Things that that staff do always and it would speed things up if you get staff in this one. And when I say staff, I don't, I don't.
Let's do it. Let's get it done.
Planning board has to view, you have to view, you have to meet there, meet once a month. We have to meet there where the staffs.
Yeah. But if you look at what some of the other places have been built. They they don't have much more screening than that. I mean, that's it's a judgment call. I mean, you know, don't say it, pay it, nothing like that. I mean, it really is, I'm telling you the truth, easy to go away.
Well, and so we need to, we need to amend the order.
Well, we do. So it won't be a judgment call and, you know, people can do what they want to. I. Even when I was on planning board, I had all these trees, it's making people think that. And then some of them dying, different, I I just don't like it. I ain't never liked it. Now, it looks good. Make people do do stuff I ain't know. I do understand it, but. Don't mean I gotta lie.
Let me call this back to order. Our five minute recess is up. Mr. Jones, you were in conversation, I think you were approaching a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'll give it a shot.
Well, before we do that, I guess we need to, as a threshold question, we need to, the board, the council needs to find that more than thirty days has passed since the submission of the plan, because the only way you're able to deal with it tonight is because there's been no action by the planning board, who hasn't been on the planning board's agenda.
Can I acknowledge that in the motion I'm fixing to make? Would that be sufficient?
Yes.
So we're taking control of it, is what you're saying?
That's right, that's right. In other words, you're, as a threshold, I mean, if this, if, if Mr. Greco had submitted this twenty days ago, you wouldn't be able to deal with this.
Got it.
So as a threshold matter, you need to find that.
Understood.
There's been.
Understood.
What about the other item? Do we, don't we want, do we not want to package all this together?
We do, but, but you first have to make a finding that, that there wasn't action by the planning board within thirty days of his submission.
All right, sir. Mr. Jones, you want to take a shot?
I'll give it my best shot, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure they'll correct me if I get it wrong. I want to be sure I get this case number.
All right.
All right, I want to make a motion pertaining to minor site plan review case number twenty-five dash oh seven dash S I T E dash zero zero one twenty-two, located at eighty-two ninety-seven and eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way. And my motion, I want to acknowledge that the, more than thirty days has passed, and due to the inaction of the planning board, the town council is, is going to review this case and seek a solution that's workable for council, for the town, for the applicant, and for land solutions. And the solution that I'm proposing in my motion is to, for the town of Stokesdale to accept along Walter Combs Way and US one fifty-eight, an eight-foot wide planting bed with three-inch caliber trees spaced two per one hundred feet. And that that will serve as the definite, for the definition of fully screened for this, for this site.
Do I have a second?
Well, you want to deal with the other issue too, about the architectural features of the building? Because there was the issue about, the comment about needing to break up every thirty feet.
Well, I was, I was gonna make a separate motion for that, yeah. Just to. All right.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. I, I want this to pass. What I'm concerned about is we're saying no action by the planning board. The planning board has not had an opportunity to take action.
Right, and, and we're not, we're not saying it's their fault that they haven't taken action, but they haven't taken action.
Due to inaction of the town of Stokesdale, then, if I, if I will amend my motion.
Or maybe, you know, if you wanted to say because of the planning staff did not submit in an orderly, orderly.
Well, they, they work for us, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, they contract, they, you know, everything, so, I mean, it's us. So, however you want to.
We can say through no fault of the planning.
I'm okay with the town of Stokesdale, I, I don't like the idea of, of.
It, it wasn't my intent to fangirl the planning board.
I understand, but I mean, it's, it's what Chuck said, and you were just going by that. I just wanted, from a clarifying standpoint.
I appreciate the point. Mr. Riggsby, accept my, my modification.
I do.
What, Mr. Lander?
I said it could easily be taken offense to see that.
Certainly for the one planning board member here, I'm sorry.
Well, the ordinance uses the phrase lack of action, not necessarily inaction, which might be slightly different.
Lack of action is fine with me.
Put it on, put it on the town.
Yeah, I like lack of action by the town of Stokesdale. Ultimately, it falls on us.
All that is, we, all, all of us, all the town, so.
Further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Mr. Riggsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. You had a second motion, Mr. Jones, I believe?
No, what's wrong with the building? Mr. Greco? I mean, what's, what are they saying's wrong with?
Well, I don't think that, I don't think they, they just said that, they made a comment that the ordinance requires that every thirty feet there be a break in the features, and Mr. Greco's saying that only applies to the front of the building, and that he does comply with that.
I believe he does comply with that, I don't, so I don't.
Because he's got doors and windows that are, that change it.
So why would we have to make a motion?
I think just, just to address the comment that appears on the plan, so I guess you could say, we deem that the proposed, proposed plan, which is gonna have breaks in architectural features every, but then that every thirty feet of the front of the building complies with the.
We're, we're going back and utilizing our authority to define the verbiage in our ordinance as, as we think appropriate, if I understand Mr. Winfrey correctly, is that?
That's right.
If it needs to be, it needs to be, Mr. Foye, or Mr. Jones?
Well, Mr. Landrith had a question, I was waiting for him to read through the.
You, you good?
What, read through this? Yeah, I mean, I've seen that, you know, huh? Yeah, I say everything.
If I understand it correctly, the planner is saying that the facade is, is too plain, it's not broken up by offsets and changes in the architecture, and Mr. Greco is saying that it has windows and doors that serve that purpose, and I happen to agree with Mr. Greco's definition of that.
Well, I do too.
And, and so.
Well, and actually.
Are they saying it's supposed to do it on the side?
Well, no, the staff just recite the statute, they, I mean, recite the ordinance, they didn't say it was compliant or non-compliant, they just made a comment that quoted the statute.
I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't see nothing wrong with it.
Well, I, I, you know, maybe, I'd give Mr. Two the benefit of the doubt, maybe he's doing this out of an abundance of caution, you know, doesn't want the town of Stokesdale coming down on him on the other end of this.
Yeah.
So that, that's fine, but it, you know, it does say right here that long blank walls are discouraged, that's the point in this verbiage, to discourage long blank walls, but if we have windows and doors, that's not long blank walls.
All right, I can buy that.
I can buy that.
I agree.
Okay.
So what's the motion here? Do we need to have another one, or are we done?
No, we have, we have to make another one.
So you could say, I mean, if you wanted to say that the council's opinion is that, interpretation is that if they place windows and doors on the sides of the building visible from one fifty-eight, that that is substantially complying with the ordinance?
No, sir. The planner misquoted the ordinance, the ordinance says the front facade of the building shall be broken up every thirty feet. If you look at our plans.
What you called the front, it deemed thirty feet wide, is it?
Yes, sir, it's wider than thirty feet.
Seventy-five.
Seventy.
Yeah, it is wider than thirty feet, but it's broken up. The ordinance doesn't say all four sides of the building have to be special, it says the front facade of the building.
I thought you called the front, what was, what, the side that was at the point of the property. When I say the point, it's, it's facing what I consider the intersection.
No, sir, the building has four elevations, there's a front, rear, a left side, and a right side. The front of our building faces Walter Combs Way.
Okay.
Ordinance prescribes a treatment for the front.
Looking right at PSI.
The ordinance prescribes treatment to the front facade.
I misunderstood you then, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll send a motion.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion regarding minor site plan review case number twenty-five dash zero seven dash S I T E dash zero zero one two two, located at eighty, eighty-two ninety-seven and eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way, in regards to the building and the requirements for the offsets and variation in the facade that the town council will accept the windows and doors as proposed in the plan by D T W Transport dated July the first two thousand and twenty-five, that the windows and doors as shown are sufficient to meet the requirement of the scenic corridor overlay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Riggsby?
Aye.
Call for the vote. Mr. Riggsby, Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. The next item on our agenda is the GFL environment.
Hold on just a second, sir. Mr. Greco, you mentioned there were three, three comments, and the third one being the one about combining the lots.
The only thing that would be necessary, perhaps, to be double, triple thorough, would be you're actually granting conditional approval based on our need to comply with other comments from other departments, which is combining the lots, which we can do in an hour.
Yeah, we need to.
Now, we in session, you know, we won't have a regular meeting for another month, so this is get you where you need to be? We feel, feel good about it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Winfrey, we feel good about what we done?
You want to quit being mad at us?
Oh, I'm not mad.
Mad at us, is he?
I'm not mad, I'm just trying to get something to move.
Forgive Mr. Landrith, he wears his feelings on his sleeve.
Sometimes you sound mad.
I get that a lot.
I guess the, I wasn't sure where the lot lines were that needed to, I couldn't tell from this rendering where the actual lot lines were that needed to be combined.
That's no different than, conditional approval is what it is. Not even, um, council or a planning board, either one, is granting conditional approval based on, we, we've approved this, now go forth and you must get driveway permit, health department permit, yada, yada, yada.
Okay.
So if you wanted to be super particular, your motion should perhaps be revised to reflect conditional approval, all the things you've agreed to tonight, plus we need to comply with any outstanding comments from other reviewers.
Mr. Winfrey, do we need to back up and address that?
I think it's probably wise, because I don't, if he needs to get permits, I don't want there to be any problem with the permitting process, which is out of our control.
So would that be a motion to reconsider?
No, I think it'd be.
Make an amendment?
Make an additional motion with regard to this, to say that the, that we give conditional approval, that the council gives conditional approval of the site plan contingent on complying with, what was the other, the combination?
Other staff comments.
Yeah.
It's fine. Compliance with other staff comments.
Other than the ones that we've already interpreted tonight. In other words, we've, we've dealt with the scenic corridor and the, and the screening issue, and we've dealt with the architectural features of the building, and, and so you're saying we give conditional approval as long as everything else that this staff has raised is complied with?
So, so Mr. Winfrey?
The key is this, if you have an approved site plan, you can go get a building permit. Your site plan's not approved until you have septic and until you have a DOT driveway permit, so it needs to be conditional based on our need to comply with DOT, environmental health, yada, yada, yada.
Mr. Mayor, I need to make a motion to modify my, my previous motion concerning this case.
Please.
To allow the applicant to receive a conditional site plan so that they may apply for the necessary, necessary follow-on permits, including the driveway permit, the health department permit, and any other applicable permits.
I'll second the motion, and.
Discussion?
I'm sorry, what was the first part? I missed the first part of that. That they, that the applicant has conditional approval subject to these other permits, is that?
To, to, to getting, it has conditional approval to allow him to pursue getting the driveway permit, health department permit, or any other applicable permits.
That's, that's good.
Yeah, I, I just don't want him to get downtown and say, oops, wait a minute, you, we, we gotta have this from the town, Stokesdale Town Council, so I think we're all on the same page. So that's my motion.
That's the motion, we have a second. Discussion? Mr. Riggsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Mr. Mayor, a point of privilege?
Yes, sir.
When Mr. Greco first spoke tonight, it resonated with me, kind of gave us a lesson on customer service one oh one, you pay for a product and, and all that, and I inferred that, you know, things may have not have gone smoothly downtown in planning, but I also believe that the staff here, led by Mr. Robbie Wagner, was, was more than, they, they bent over backwards to, to get this right, and, and I just would like to credit him, and.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Hundred percent, Mr. Foye, you're, you're correct, and I, I have additional comments towards the end, as much as you may not want to hear me talk anymore tonight.
You getting your steps in between going back?
Ten thousand a day, ten thousand a day.
That mean you're gonna join us for the rest of the meeting?
Ten thousand a day.
You got your counter on.
All right, next item, GFL environmental update. I believe we have the general manager, Steve Cobb, with us. Mr. Cobb, welcome.
Thank you.
In a preface to this, I'd like to welcome Mr. Steve Cobb. Back in, I want to say, twenty twenty-two, we, we signed a franchise agreement where GFL is authorized to operate in Stokesdale, recently renewed the contract. Been, been really, really solid up until this summer, we've had a, had a few hiccups, and, you know, just, I'd like, invited Mr. Cobb out to address some of these hiccups, and maybe we can collaborate and work together and support you ever how we can in any corrective action that you're, you're going to be discussing with us tonight. So thank you for being here, thank you for waiting, and welcome.
As Councilman Foye said, my name is Steve Cobb, I'm the general manager of GFL, came back to this area in late July twenty twenty-three, so it's been about two years since I've gotten back. And yes, you are correct, we've had some hiccups in our service over the past couple of months, and a lot of it is due to the two things that are most valuable in our business, which is people and equipment. Stokesdale typically has had two primary drivers that have always serviced Stokesdale since the inception. Unfortunately, one of them has been out for about four months, five months, with some very serious health issues, and the other driver has decided to move into a different line of business for us, driving a commercial vehicle instead of a residential vehicle. So we have been replacing employees in the commercial product line, it's a ripple effect, we've had some people retire, and we've had some health issues with some of our, our employees, and so we've, it's opened up opportunity for residential people to move up. Residential services, the majority of the customer base, one route can service a thousand homes, one commercial route can service a hundred commercial stops, so it's created a, a backfield where we've had to bring people in and start training them in our industry. Some people enjoy it, some people don't. We go through the process of hiring, they last about a week, decide that, especially in the summertime, it doesn't smell great, and they decide to find something else to do. We are in the process right now, we've got more people coming on board, we actually have some, some help coming in next week to help train, so that we can get the new hires more familiar with their routes and get them trained up. We also have, some years back, it was prior to me getting there, we made an acquisition, had quite a few trucks, those trucks were not the greatest when we got them, and they, we've done everything we can to keep them going, but we're in the process of replacing those trucks right now with some later model trucks. Next year, we're looking at replacing about thirty percent of our residential fleet with C and G powered ASL, which are the automated side loader trucks. So we're getting there, it's just taking a little bit, you know, I apologize, it's affected the service for the residents of Stokesdale, we're working diligently to get it corrected. I can't sit, sit here right now today and say it's fixed. Probably within the next two weeks, we should be on very, very solid footing, I feel like we're on good footing now, but when you deal with people, you never know what happens day to day sometimes, so with our, in respect to our drivers. We are looking to make some routing changes, which will affect Stokesdale in the next couple of months. Of course, we'll get with, with council and get with y'all. Prior to that, what we do now is we kind of send a bunch of trucks up here for a couple of days and service everything, so you get different drivers, new hires, you get people that have been here a while. Our intent is to turn Stokesdale into where we have one driver that services trash, one driver that services recycling, and they're the only two drivers that are servicing Stokesdale. And that way, they can stop by and see Robbie, his staff, at the end of the day, make sure everything's taken care of before they head back down to, to our base of operations in High Point. So, but, you know, I wanted to come and apologize for some of the service issues that your residents. So, but, you know, I wanted to come and apologize for some of the service issues that your residents have suffered through, possibly some of y'all have suffered through. But, uh, I assure you, we're working diligently to get this corrected as soon as humanly possible.
Uh, just a couple of things. I'm very sympathetic to, to labor struggles and all that, so I appreciate you acknowledging that, and, and I know that's a, the real factor, and, and I'm sure with your leadership, things will get better. As, as you can imagine, being in a small town, uh, you know, trash pickup misses can be a, a political quagmire for us, and, you know, we, we've gotten a lot of, uh, we've, we've gotten a lot of complaints. I don't blame them. Uh, you, you mentioned, uh, it could impact, it's impacted us, I believe roughly out of the last, call it eight, uh, Fridays pickup for me, uh, there's been a miss, maybe at least half of those. The good news is, I think y'all do a good job of communicating that with your phone calls, and by seven AM on Saturday, it's gone. But, uh, you know, I, I appreciate your commitment and, and to continue to reevaluate your operation. You mentioned you might need to make some modifications, uh, into your routing schedule and pickup days. The success of that is going to be communication, you know, over communicating. And, and we will look to you to communicate that to our residents, and we would be happy, at least, you know, speaking as one council member, uh, I would be happy to, to have, you know, Robbie to, to, uh, for Facebook to communicate that outward. I think that's a good, good tool, obviously, uh, so, you know, I just appreciate you being here, uh, acknowledging the problem, and, uh, we do need to get it turned around as quickly as we reasonably can.
I understand.
Thank you.
Residential.
Steve, I would, I'd reiterate some of that. I, you, talking about the timeliness of the notice, I sometimes get notice on a, on a Friday afternoon. That, that, that's a problem. Uh, as the mayor, I am trying to be in touch with, with Robbie, as well as I'll put it out on my own Facebook, just to let as many people that are paying attention to know what we know. That's my only complaint, it just, Friday afternoon's too late. If it looks like it's gonna happen, I would think you would know the previous afternoon, and I don't know what the work schedule is for your clerical people or whoever makes this announcement to us, but.
I'll speak to them. I, I, they, that's handled primarily between operations and, um, our office administrator, who handles all of the out dollars. So I will talk to them and be sure we're more timely in getting that message out.
Well, your, your fellow who is over your drivers, he's, he's been, been very easy to, 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 uh, communicate with. It's just the timeliness of, of when we get the notice, that's my, my, my only concern.
I'll get that addressed.
Anything else?
I do have a couple of questions or comments. I understand that when, when the, the town as a whole or route as a whole is missed, you send out a message. But we, we heard a lot about some individuals on some, some rural roads that have been missed over, over, and maybe continuously missed. Are those small individuals being addressed in any way, or do they have a voice to call and speak to somebody local that they can get their individual concerns taken care of versus, you know, rely on the whole town as a whole?
They do. Uh, I mean, we, I think they all have our number, I think it's, um.
Is it, do you, or do you know, I don't know who, who, I don't have a name to give you, but I know we've had several on certain roads that have repeatedly had, had any issues. Are you hearing from those people?
I heard from, um, and I can't think of their name, they're a backdoor customer. Um, we use a little, um, Zuzu truck that services these backdoors that are too far for our drivers to walk, and, um, in this case, elderly couple, they can't drag their carts up to the street. We have one of those trucks, and the engine in that truck blew up about six weeks ago. Um, and it doesn't just run in Stokesdale, it runs our whole service area. That route in particular was, um, a challenge because we really don't have a backup for that. Uh, we did rent a truck, uh, week before last, um, we got the route caught up, everybody's caught up with that route. And we do have a backup now, uh, truck, um, it's ugly as sin, but it picks up trash. So, it's, uh, we will be sure in the future that, uh, you know, that we're addressing these more proactively.
Okay, and, and one other question, just had the timeliness today, is, is I am on the lower, I guess the lower end of the route, down toward, um, uh, Oak Ridge, and I did not get picked up today, is there a reason why?
I do not know, because when I talked to my operations staff before I left, they assured me that everybody was picking up. Um, I don't know if the truck was late, or if it was an area, we have a new driver on that did not read the map correctly, but I will address it as soon as I get out of here.
Yeah, um, front nine, uh, Dawn Acres, front nine drive, it was six thirty when I left to come up here, and it was still not picked up.
Okay.
So.
I will have them look at it. Did you say front, front nine?
Nine, yes.
Were there others on your street?
Yes, the entire street had not been picked up. I did see the truck going south, south of our neighborhood, um, when I came in at about five thirty, but it looked like he was heading south down sixty-eight, picking up, so would indicate to me that he may have missed us because he was already kind of on the south side of, of, of the, the town.
I'll, I'll, I'll check, and I'll let you know exactly what happened, so I apologize for that.
That's all right. Is there anything else? No. Steve, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience and, um.
Appreciate you coming before us.
Yes, sir.
And if, if the route, you know, was going to change, you know, again, communicate.
Oh, yeah.
Happy to support how we can, but, uh, we will look to you, uh, to make that successful.
That'll happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of time and materials invoiced to town water system valve box risers, that's on me. I'd like to make a motion that we pay the bill invoice that is due Yates Construction, it's invoice dated July the thirty-first, twenty, twenty-five. Invoice number two, seven, five, one, eight, dash, three, for a total of nine hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Rigsby.
Aye.
Mr. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Landrith.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
And I am also aye. Discussion of the floor coating in restrooms in the town park. I think each of you have in your packet the bids from the two, companies that we, uh, talked with. The company that is AA, we know that they have done, uh, the Oak Ridge facility, the, um, Floor Shield Company, they have done the, the park on, hmm, what is the name of it? It's, it's off of Window, right where the CarMax is, that park area right there inside of Greensboro, those were the examples that they gave us. The AA bid included the prep work, uh, I think Mr. Wagner was able to provide us with a list of the prep work that, um, Floor Shield would do, which is very comparable. They tape off everything, they, um, clean up everything, uh, they, of course, prep the floor. Again, it's in that, in that, um, description. The question that we have, should we proceed on this, is color. So that's, that's a decision that we have to make if we decide to do this tonight or not. The one bid for Floor Shield is twenty-five hundred dollars, the other is fifty-eight eighty. I inquired as to why there was such a discrepancy, and I didn't get an answer.
Who did you inquire to?
The AA people?
Did you acquire to the Floor Shield team?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. As a matter of fact, this, this is a, this is a revised, this is a revised, um, quote from, um, Floor Shield, uh, it's a, it's an additional twenty, it's additional five hundred dollars, they said they underquoted it.
Wait a minute, so how much, how much are we looking at?
Twenty-five hundred dollars for the Floor Shield, and the, um, AA, uh, painting is fifty-eight eighty.
What I'm saying is, there's, I mean, it, this could be the same thing, but, um, what did they say as far as, um, they're a whole lot less than this other company?
I didn't question it being less.
Are we getting the same product?
Yes, well, um, sorry, as far as the exact same product, no, I can't, I can't attest to that, it's a, Mr. Jones may be more familiar with the kind of product that it's used, but.
Is there any type of warranty?
Yes, yes, the AA, or, excuse me, the Floor Shield is offering a fifteen-year warranty.
Oh, wow.
The AA is not.
Really?
That is correct.
I think that makes an easy decision.
Yep. Even though, I know they did a good job.
It's a, the, the product is one hundred percent poly-asp- aspartic base color coat, one hundred percent poly-aspartic clear coat. And then the colors, um, if I may, I'll, I'll be glad to make a motion, I would like to include the color that, that we decide on, and I have an, I have the color spectrum in my phone if you'd like to see them. My suggestion is in keeping with our colors of our Parks and Recreation group, as well as our elementary school, our high school. The colors for these, um, athletic programs seem to be a red, white, and black, or gray, or silver, however you, whatever color you, you might determine. The, um, Floor Shield was able to offer a custom color at no additional cost to the twenty-five hundred. And the, uh, AA did not make that same offer.
Do they do water tanks?
Coat.
I'd like to say our water tank in the Viking colors too, but that's an effort point, I don't want to hold to make that.
Um, that's, that's, that's the color my, my suggest here, if you'd like to see these colors, I can.
Well, I'm good with Viking colors, that's, as far as I'm concerned, if that, anybody else wants to do something different, that's fine either. I'm not much of a color picker either.
Your color's red and white?
Red, white, and a gray or a black, it needs to, I think it needs to have a, I think red and white is going to be a little stark.
Have you seen this color actually down on a floor somewhere?
Uh, not on a floor, I have not. I have not.
Have they offered you an opportunity to do a sample board?
No, I did not ask for that. Uh, Mr. Foy would, uh, had, had, uh, voiced a sense of urgency if we could get it done before our first football game, we were hoping maybe to do that, and they, they will make every effort to get that done, that first football game is the twentieth. As I explained to Mr. Foy, if, if we're gonna do it, I think we need to notify them probably this evening, first thing in the morning, that we, that we let the contract.
Might I suggest that, uh, two of the color picker outlers be there when the first, first of it's applied to, uh, object if it just turns out to be what less than what's expected, because once it's down, there ain't no getting it up.
Well, I ain't gonna know what expect, what's expected, I mean.
Well, I didn't pick out the color, but somebody did.
Well, I just said I'm okay with it, but, I mean.
Well, I, I suggested that combination of colors, thinking of the, of the sports, um.
We, we, I, I will do no good going and looking at what they're doing to a floor.
I, I don't do colors.
What color or anything else, I mean, if it's red and, and those colors, I mean, I, you know, so if y'all, you want to go where somebody else wants to go, that's all fine and dandy, I'm not, I'm not in on it.
It would have been my preference to have the manufacturer's cut sheet attached to this bid and, and the, uh.
You can, um, pull that, pull that, I'm sorry, you can pull that up online, Robbie, and see the colors, you can see them.
Mr. Rigsby. It would be safer if we had the manufacturer's cut sheet specifications attached to this bid, it would detail this, the preparation for the floor, uh, application, you know, all the way through cleanup, just saying.
Excuse me, Mr. Rigsby. Finding the colors.
Now, if you go to their website, robbiefloorshieldtria.com, and go to, uh, color charts and samples, and it'll, it'll have, um.
It'll have what they offer as standard colors.
Yeah.
But they're willing to do a custom color for us if that's what we choose.
Well, none of us wives are helping here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think we could just pick a standard right there, like, um, I think a, a gray and black or something, or something that's going disguise imperfections and go with it, it's just a floor color.
Ladies, what do y'all think? Which, which one?
Remember that the walls of this thing, the walls of the restrooms down there are basically in the brown neighborhood.
Right.
Yeah, they're the colors. The, the, the walls are in a, in a brown, um, so, you know, if you, if you're gonna, the, the red and white, red, white and gray is going to stand out in a big way.
Is that the Sagard?
You mean stand out in a good way or a bad way?
Depends on which team you like.
Well, I like the Vikings. Well, they ain't, no, they're cadets, I guess, they ain't the Vikings.
Just happens to be Wolfpack color too.
Yeah.
Ain't that odd?
Ain't that odd?
Yeah, I think that, I think the, uh, water tires should be that color too, should have been the start.
I'll mention it, I'll mention that.
It's ever painted again.
If they, if they want the business.
Wouldn't take us long to roll that thing, I'll hold you.
We could epoxy it, you'd never have to paint it again.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not trying.
Okay, come on, let's, let's make a decision here, where, or, do we have a decision on the color, and I'll make that part of the motion?
What do you like? You said, what'd you say? I'm gonna agree with you.
Ah, shit, I'm no good at colors either, I'm, I'm, I messed up, I've messed up more colors and.
What do you think, Derek? You got an eye for?
No, I don't, I'm.
You do too.
If you want to go with something light on there, like, um.
What is it, Sag?
Like that Olympic, but add red instead of blue, that'd probably be all right.
Guys, I would suggest you get a sample board done, or go look at this down on the floor somewhere, just saying.
Or the Bolsa, same thing, add a little fle, uh, fleck of red in there.
Well, you've got the one, what is it, Arches, Arches? And what's the other, Bryce, that's a darker floor. The lighter the color, I think the bigger the room will look.
You've never been married, men should never do this, pick colors.
I don't have a preference, I, I just.
Hold on, Yosemite.
I, I guess, I'll make a motion, we'll go on a field trip right now down to the bathroom and take the colors with us.
I like Yosemite too, I like that color.
Bill, you, you feeling Yosemite here?
Yosemite it is.
What do you think, Jim? Yeah.
Michael, you wanna, Michael, you want to get in trouble here, or?
Yeah.
I'm fine, whatever.
What they said, so something's wrong.
Thank you, Michael, we appreciate that.
Spoken.
I do have a question, if you, if you pick from that list, would that be removing that two hundred dollar custom color charge?
There is no, there, uh.
Is the last sentence on that?
Two hundred dollars more.
That's, it says add, so it's twenty-three hundred dollars without the custom, so yes, it would, it would be twenty-three hundred dollars instead of twenty-five hundred dollars, yes. Yes, you are correct. Is it worth two hundred dollars to have the color we choose, or, or is that a good enough spectrum? Robbie, raise it, there's another group of colors. The glacier, the glacier is a, is a, looks like a good combination.
I just want to see some floors down for the football game.
Yeah, I do too. I mean.
They can be purple.
Let's go back to Yosemite.
Do what?
Back to Yosemite.
Go back to Yosemite, please.
I mean, that's.
That's a big picture of Yosemite.
Yeah, I mean, nothing says Yosemite like that.
Yosemite Sam.
Yeah.
Nothing says Yosemite like that.
I mean, that's, that's immediately what I think of.
All right, let's do it.
We're agreed on it, okay. My motion is that we accept the, uh, bid from Floor Shield, that our cor, color choice is the Yosemite. The, um, uh, bid price would be at twenty-three hundred dollars.
I suggest we raise it up to the two hundred dollar premium in case we have to pay that.
For the Yosemite?
In case we have to pay that, it's, it's a premium color, I don't know.
Uh, these, those are all the standard colors, those that are up there are the standard colors, those are, the, the, the red, white, and blue that I suggested was the extra two hundred dollars.
Mr. Foy's making sure that there's enough money to get the job done, that don't mean you got to spend it all.
And while we're on the topic of money, let's just, can the motion confirm which pot of money this is coming out of?
Guilford County ARPA.
Guilford County ARPA.
Where there's eleven or twelve thousand left in the.
Federal ARPA. Federal ARPA.
Uh, excuse me, federal ARPA. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, uh, help me out here. Uh, I'm, I'm thinking twenty-three hundred dollars is a maximum. You're saying go twenty-five hundred dollars is a maximum.
I'm just saying it based off the quote where they said a premium color is two hundred dollars more. I don't know if that's premium or not.
It's not. It is not. That is a standard color. All those that are, that were in that swash, swatch, or whatever it is, those are standard colors.
Thank you. I trust that there won't be an issue.
Okay, twenty-three hundred dollars.
Two hundred fifty dollar, uh, allotment, throw it on there if you have to.
Are you suggesting, are you suggesting we, we set a limit at twenty-five hundred dollars maximum?
I'm just suggesting we vote.
Yeah. I am too.
Twenty-three hundred dollars, twenty-three hundred dollars. We accept the bid at twenty-three hundred dollars with the color being, um, Yosemite. Yosemite, that says Yosemite to me.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. Discussion? Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I reckon.
And I am aye. Okay, let's open it up for public discussion. Three minutes, if anyone would like to speak. Bill?
My name is Bill Greco. Uh, my company is located at seventy-two fifty-one U.S. Highway East in Stokesdale. Council's well aware of what I do. I'm a land use planning consultant professional. Uh, I wanna make it clear at this moment, I'm not being paid to speak by anybody on my own volition just to talk. Uh, first and foremost, I'm aware that there are some, uh, ordinance revisions currently being batted around. Uh, I am familiar with how you change ordinances and propose changes to ordinance. Last week, uh, an amendment that I wrote got passed in Oak Ridge. I would request that council give some consideration to, at this juncture where we're at now with reviewing the ordinance, we think about looking at the scenic corridor. Uh, this has gone on for a long time. Everybody's had problems. Uh, it continues. I'm on my whatever number of case that, that I've had an issue with scenic corridor. Uh, if it takes somebody to actually write a suggestion and pay a fee, let me know. I'll write it and pay it. Uh, but I think we're well past time for scenic corridor to be addressed. I think the time is now while we're doing other things with the ordinance.
Could you give us a, a draft of what you're thinking about? You don't want, I don't, I don't...
Uh, my suggestion is to do away with it in its entirety personally. And I, that's a real ea- that's a real easy text amendment to make. Uh, you search and replace and delete anything and everything to do with scenic corridor. We have plenty of other rules and regulations. Of course, that's my opinion. But again, while the ordinance is being looked at and modified and changed, that's the proper time to do it in my mind for efficiency sake. And again, because it's overdue. And I will pay and sign the application and make a suggestion if that's, uh... Throwing that out there for you guys to think about, uh, get back at me on a go, no-go, go home, I'll sit down. Um, secondly, tell you a quick story. Two thousand seven-ish, before the big crash, uh, my firm, One Day for Fun, we sat down and we looked at where all we were working. I had a project in twenty-six different jurisdictions, cities, counties, towns, municipalities. Currently, today, I'm working on one in Asheville, one at, one at the coast. Uh, so I, point of that story is not, boy, I'm cool and I do a lot. Point of that story is I work with a lot of staff across the state and have for thirty years. I have never chosen to speak on what I'm about to speak on, but I am this evening. I've never encountered staff like what I've encountered in the town of Stokesdale. Mr. Robbie Wagner bends over backwards to help your constituents, to help move things along. He does things that are far outside of his job description. You get emails after hours, weekends. If he doesn't know something, he'll tell you, I, I have no idea, but give me a minute and I'll, let me, let me see what I can find out. That is exceptional, unusual, unheard of, uncommon, uh, to have a person on your staff that operates like that. I want council to hear that from somebody who is an inu- I'm a customer, frequent flyer. I know how customers are supposed to be treated in this arena, in this type of environment. And I can assure you, uh, I, I, there's not enough time. I could do ten more minutes to tell you how highly, uh, I think you guys should be aware that this man operates above and beyond.
That's enough. Now we gotta move him into a bigger office. Thanks, Bill.
Be careful.
Bill, I think we all...
Hey, it's not falling on deaf ears. I think we're all very appreciative of, of him and, and we, we appreciate your recognizing that. We really do.
And we did hire him.
Gave him praise a couple times.
We found him. We're trying to keep him.
Credit to whoever found him and certainly, uh, let's do everything possible to keep him cause again, I promise you, I work with all kinds of people. That's a special one.
We think so. We think so. And we appreciate that.
We agree, but thank you for saying that and thank you for...
We, we wish you to let him be out of the room, but, you know, we'll, we'll deal with it.
I don't want him to hear secondhand what I had said.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel comments, Mr. Rigsby.
I'm good. I appreciate everybody. Keep in mind the, uh, folks that died on nine eleven and certainly the folks that have died this week and within the last few weeks, um, pray for them and, um, hopefully, uh, we'll have some resolve in this country sooner, sooner and later.
Mr. Foy?
Uh, thank you all, uh, for staying, uh, through the, the whole meeting. Uh, thank you to Robbie, uh, thank you Chuck. Always, always thank you to my colleagues. Thank you.
Mr. Landrith?
Yep, thanks, everybody. It has stayed, our usuals and, and of course Robbie. And I also wanna shout out to Priscilla. We keep seeing zeros, uh, in those ninety days. She, I've never seen anybody could collect money like she can. I, I had a business I'd wanna hire, you know, for it. Man, she's, she's pretty good.
Absolutely.
Um, I, you know, also, it's, it's sad to see these folks, um, getting killed, um... Just tell you the truth, it's, it's not unusual coming from, uh... I better shut up. That's enough. Mr. Jones?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank our three citizens that are still here and staff and Mr., Mr. Winfrey is always is a... I'm also very appreciative of his abilities, uh, both his, his law school training, his experience, and this, his ability to communicate. Even when we disagree, I find him to be agreeable. So, you know, appreciate Mr. Winfrey. You other four, uh, you mostly are okay, I think. Uh, I, I, you know, for days now, uh, with all the strife going on around us, the, the, the bad news we get, uh, it, it makes me really, really appreciate, you know, what we have here in Stokesdale. And it, and it makes me conscious of how, how we need to be careful to protect what we have, to look out after our citizens' best interest, our businesses, and, uh, be really, really careful with the decisions we render on the behalf of the town of Stokesdale. And, uh, that's all I got to say.
I think it's all been said. I would like to thank everyone for, for staying with us. Uh, I would ask that everyone keep in their prayers, the family of Charlie, Kirk. Uh, it's a, it's a terrible situation. You lose a young man of such high potential. Uh, I looked at him. I've, I've watched him and I hate to say it, but Robbie, you look a lot like him.
He does, doesn't he?
He does. You look a lot like him, you know? And, uh, and, and, uh, you, you present yourself very well, as you well know. But anyway, uh, thank you all for staying and, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second. Mr. Rigsby?
Aye.
Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Landrith?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am also aye.
Did we make it?
Yes, sir.
You gonna run?
How are you? I was not. Um, my daughter had a game today. Uh, I was out there Tuesday.